In terms of medical marijuana dispensaries, staff is currently not recommending that the draft zoning ordinance authorize this use in the city. Police Chief Jackie Seabrooks is here and can provide a little more input on that. We also have Principal City Planner Paul Foley, who can answer questions as well regarding this issue.
Welcome, Chief Seabrooks. Thank you for coming.
You're more than welcome. Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Martin. It's not the police department's intent to make a statement about the efficacy of medicinal marijuana as an effective therapeutic treatment protocol. Instead, it's the police department's intent to provide some context for the array of public safety concerns that potentially arise with the presence of medicinal marijuana dispensaries in our community. As it stands, we understand that the commission has, or excuse me, the council has placed a one-year moratorium on this and that you'll be deciding on whether the ordinance, the zoning ordinance permits this activity. But I do want to point out a number of concerns. Should the decision be to move forward with these dispensaries, we would request that there are a number of public safety-based protocols that would be put into place to include the ability of the locations to have video monitoring, limited access control, to agree to participate in the prosecutorial process associated with any loitering or trespassing concerns that may be identified. Because it's been the experience in those communities that have had these dispensaries that there is a level of violence that occurs in and around these largely cash-based businesses. We also understand in our research that there's a question as to the ready availability of the medicinal marijuana for those patients who reside in the city. Our research has indicated that of the, there are a number of ways in which patients can receive marijuana. It can be delivered. It can be delivered to the home. It can be delivered curbside if individuals have a concern about having the delivery operators come to the residence. We checked in the general area and found as many as 15 of these services, and I do understand that, according to a Los Angeles-based report, many of these were not permitted. That's a concern because, which speaks to the reason that the police department is taking a position on this matter relative to any decisions that may be made to bring this to the community. There's, in cities that are very similar in demographics to ours, in terms of the socioeconomics, we've seen robberies, we've seen very violent crimes because of the high level of money that goes through. Rough estimates are that anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000 a month in transactions occur. And because the federal government is only beginning to take a stance on the appropriateness of the banking industry to allow deposits, a lot of this money is kept on hand. And as recently as last week, in a neighboring jurisdiction, there was a robbery at a dispensary. The owner proprietor was beaten and drugs and money were stolen. We know that part of the discussion has to be to also regulate the activities that occur in these dispensaries. And, for example, some ordinances enable the cultivation of marijuana, which essentially is a marijuana grow, to occur on property. We would strongly encourage, we, the police department, would strongly encourage that that not be allowed to occur in our community. The operation of these dispensaries also calls into question the police department's ability to continue to participate in certain drug task forces. There may be existing memorandums of agreement, or memorandum of agreement, that address the issue of our ability to enforce marijuana ordinances and engage in marijuana enforcement that may be put at risk by the presence of these dispensaries in our community. And it is something that we're currently working with our municipal attorneys to evaluate, to ensure that that valuable law enforcement tool is not compromised by our position, the city's position on this matter. So, as I say again, it is not a matter of the police department taking a stance to say that, no, this is not an appropriate treatment regimen, but more, it's a concern for the circumstances that these dispensaries can bring to a community. In my former position as a police chief in an adjacent city, we had two of these dispensaries in operation. And quite frankly, it was a nightmare. We had robberies, we had beatings, we had shootings, we had a number of community-based complaints about community livability issues that arose from individuals who would go into the properties, stay outside, smoke dope, and engage in other behaviors that were inconsistent with the expectations of the community. Over time, the city took a position that while it understood the importance of this therapeutic regimen, the costs associated with the operation of these businesses were inconsistent. And I would strongly encourage a similar position to be taken in this matter, because I believe that it will create public safety challenges for us, despite the best intentions of both the commission and the council, and the imposition of a variety of regulations designed to delimit the opportunity for this untoward activity to occur. And I'm certain that's the crux of my statement for this evening, but if you should have any questions, I'm more than happy to take them.
Thank you very much. Yes, I would just like to let the commission know that if you have any questions, we can have comments later, but if you have any questions of Chief Seabrooks, now would be the time, and then we can question, ask questions of other staff, Mr. Kim, later.
My only question is this, and that is, we've received a bunch of letters saying that there are communities near here, I guess including West Hollywood, that have crafted an ordinance that effectively deals with many of the concerns you expressed. And I wonder if you've looked at anything like that, at cities where they highly regulate and it works?
I'm familiar with the high regulations. Nevertheless, I will tell you that, different than West Hollywood, we don't have, you know, 10,000 sheriff's deputies to address the array of concerns that make monitoring a circumstance attendant to the dispensaries as easy. It's not to say that we couldn't, but I will tell you that even the best of crafted ordinances and the like can still result in issues that are of concern and that will require a police response in order to address them, in addition to the attendant prosecutorial actions that may or may need to be, may need to occur in the aftermath.
So I guess maybe what you said just went over my head, so I'm a little dense, so let's try it again.
Okay, let me try it again.
So the 10,000 sheriff deputies, are they saying they have 10,000 in West Hollywood?
No, 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 no. They have, the sheriff's department is about 10,000 deputies, and where, because West Hollywood is not the only city that is patrolled by the sheriff's department that has that.
You mean the LA County Sheriff? I'm sorry, I don't even.
Exactly. They have the ability to draw on that level of resource for those communities that are policed by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department wherein seemingly very tight ordinances have been written. Even with those tightly written ordinances, as with any laws, and we have some very tightly written laws that control an array of things, that still doesn't negate the need for the police departments to get involved with the enforcement. It does not negate the fact that activities occur which require a police response, investigation, and subsequent prosecutorial action.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Commissioner McKinnon?
Chief, I've always had a very high regard for the Santa Monica Police Department and their ability to respond to issues. If we move ahead with this, I wouldn't be wrong in thinking that your department would be able to police this dispensary with the same level of care and attention and regard for public safety that you police everything else with.
That's correct. You would not be wrong.
So, you're bringing some issues to our attention, but should we move ahead and the council move ahead, this would just become a normal part of the areas that you have to deal with on a daily basis?
It would cast differently the activities that we address on a daily basis. Because when one looks at the propensity of some of the activities coupled with the uniqueness of our, some of the circumstances in our community, I can envision that there will be an increased requirement for us to engage in activities. For example, we have quite a number of people who come in and out of our community already to engage in illegal activities, and we police that very sensitively but appropriately. Based on what we've seen as the experience in other communities, the Part I, the violent crime that is attendant to the operation of some, let me be clear, some of these dispensaries, is clearly of concern. We've had a robbery involving the stealing of medicinal marijuana wherein people were injured. Now, that occurred not associated with a dispensary, but the victims indicated that they had been to a nearby dispensary when this, and then, you know, they were robbed. Well, now we know that with a highly cash business, the availability of the drugs, that folks who come and go could potentially be victimized. And that's a circumstance which is not something we deal with as a routine consistently now, but we will be prepared, no matter the decision or of you as the commission or the council, to address the issues. I bring this to you as a caution, that it is another opportunity for potential victimization.
So there's a layer of concerns you want us to address, no matter what we do?
Yes, and that, and in addressing those concerns, as you would recommend, the crafting of any associated ordinance, I would suggest that the ordinance contain language that requires the owners of such dispensaries or the operators of such dispensaries to have an array of security mechanisms, to agree to inspections, to ensure that there is appropriate signage indicating no trespassing, no loitering, et cetera, that they sign agreements to cooperate in prosecutorial processes that might occur as a result of the violations of the signage. Because as the police department, as we respond to those things, they have to be, certain levels of crimes have to be committed in our presence and require the involvement of a community member before an arrest can be made. Otherwise, it's an advisal and a move along which, over time, can be minimally effective. So we would want those kinds of circumstances to be covered by any ordinance in order to give us as much enforcement authority to ensure the open access of these facilities to anyone who would want to take advantage.
And my last question then is, do you have any thoughts on whether the ability to prescribe in a dispensary should be split from the delivery of the drug in the dispensary? In other words, in some other places, people can walk in and be prescribed the drug and then purchase it. Is that more or less better than just the ability to buy in the dispensary but be prescribed somewhere else?
I would prefer a bifurcation of the activities, because I think that what, based on what I've seen in other communities not too far from here, there are people who will walk up to you as you walk down the sidewalk and say, hey, you want to see a doctor, you want to buy some cush, you need an examination. And it creates this perceptual, this fear, and I've been a police officer for 33 years, and I was concerned that, you know, people who were rather disheveled walked up to me, pushing cards for me to see a doctor, and I was just taking advantage of a day at the beach.
Right.
And so when I see that, and I see it fairly close to our borders, I have to question whether or not it's appropriate to have those services combined, and I would say no. A dispensary that solely dispenses, does not grow, is preferred to one that grows, dispenses, and has the medical services attached.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Hamlerich?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have it all, because I think it's important to address it. So, what I have as constraints on what we ought to do if we do do it is video monitoring, limited access, cooperation with prosecutorial authorities, inspection, the right to inspect, no loitering, I guess this is signage, right?
That's correct.
Okay, signage, no growing on the premises, and finally, bifurcation of prescription and dispensing. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything else?
Not that I can think of offhand. Those would be the crucial things, right up front, that I would think that would control. Now, I would say that municipal attorneys may want to add some additional protections, and I would believe it appropriate for you to hear from them on anything that might be an additional requirement.
I do want to talk about marijuana. I was very happy that CVS Pharmacy is getting cigarettes off their shelf, and Santa Monica is doing a lot to prohibit it. I'd like to see an ordinance requiring that any pharmacy not carry cigarettes. I hope that can work its way through. It's not unreasonable, other cities are doing it. As far as medical marijuana, I have to respect the Chief of Police and her concerns. But I have to say, my dear friend Bill Rosendahl, who was very sick with cancer, has benefited from medical marijuana. And I hope there is some way to understand that there is a way to do it without it just getting out there with the stigma of everything that's been going on for decades and decades. I don't smoke anything recreationally. I don't even drink alcohol. I just, as they always say, high on life, enjoying it. We got a great city. But I do have that concern that we shouldn't just say, hey, if you want it, go to another city that's nearby. We can do it. But the Chief of Police's concerns are very valid, and I hope that everyone here that wants this to happen understands that these safety concerns are very valid and proceed in that way.
The next speaker is Jody Landers.
Hello. I'm born and raised here in Santa Monica. I feel like I'm an upstanding citizen, and I speak on behalf of my neighbors and friends who want to have a medical dispensary in Santa Monica, not all over the place, but maybe two or three, and even in an office building, there's plenty of release signs, Wilshire, Pico, Montana, near the hospital. I'm 52, and most of my friends that are older than me don't want to take pharmaceuticals. They, you know, don't want a delivery person to come over, they want to go and pick it out for themselves. There's different strains that do different things, and it, I understand the police's concern, but keep in mind that Rite Aid, Walgreens, CVS are being held up for OxyContin and Codeine and all these things. More than any dispensary has, that I know of, has been affected. I don't want to keep you too long, but the train is now coming, and a lot of people are going to be coming into this city. We don't want to seem snobby or uncool. I don't think having a protected place for people to get safe access would harm us at all. I don't think it would blemish us. I love Santa Monica. The whole state might be legal by, in 2016 anyway, so we don't want to seem like we're out of it. Please consider definitely having a dispensary or a couple dispensaries in Santa Monica. Thank you.
Hanala Sagal.
Hi, thank you. My name is Hanala Sagal, and I've lived in Santa Monica for 30 years. I really appreciate the police making me feel safe. I love the feeling, because I've lived all over Los Angeles, and I realize this is the closest thing to Mayberry we're going to get. You know, this is just an amazing, I'm also, I've been sober since December 28, 1982. In dealing with clients and over the past 30 years, dealing with what recovering alcoholics and addicts go through, I so strongly believe that safe access is required. I hate the fact that they're going down to bad areas in Venice, that maybe, maybe the, I'm sorry, I just, maybe the area wasn't that safe, that, see, what I'm hearing is that people are risking their safety going into areas they would never go to, where they would so much rather just stay in Santa Monica. And these are my friends and clients, you know, the lower element, like all the comedy writers, producers, you know, all the people who have a lot of disposable income, who I know go to the other dispensaries, and they'll stop at like Baby Blue's BBQ and drop a couple hundred bucks, because they'll spend while they're in that area. So these are people who are very responsible, who choose not to drink alcohol, because they realize they've become not good citizens on alcohol, so they prefer to do the medical marijuana. And it's just a shame that they have to go to these unsafe areas, that they can't stay in Mayberry, you know, where medical marijuana could be so safe to get to, because we do have an incredible police department. And, you know, I just want to say, I did a show called Shape Up LA for 15 years, talking about, that I shaped, that I shot on Nebraska, you know, for Century Cable, if anyone's old enough to remember, I was Susan Stadner back there, back then. And I strongly believe in, you know, everything being judged on a per situation, and I think that we can have like the classiest dispensaries in the entire state, until, of course, it all becomes legal, which, you know, we're headed that way. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I love this community, and a few years ago, I was able to work with a PSA that was shooting at the Santa Monica Fire Department. It was about don't text and drive, and it was, I got a call at like 11:30 the night before saying, can you be here at 6:30 in the morning and volunteer? And I'm like, yeah, okay, I'll do that. Well, in 2012, I got a certificate of appreciation from the Santa Monica Fire Department. I'm very proud of that, and being a part of this, of this community. And it's a wonderful place to walk around and to feel safe, to feel at peace, to have some peace of mind. And I, I do choose sobriety, but I also support the legalization of cannabis, and I also support that there is safe access, and many of the, everything that was itemized, that are your concerns, absolutely, I agree with, but I just like to say thank you to address this tonight. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to address the Planning Commission, because I believe that medical marijuana dispensaries have been misclassified, and intentionally so. They are not a personal service, they are a medical service. And so they should be regulated exactly as you regulate CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, all these other places that are selling pills in our community. With the death of Philip Seymour Hoffman, we were all recently reminded that a lot of addicts on heroin start on pills. You know, there's this whole mythology of the gateway drug with medical marijuana, is medical marijuana is not the same thing as marijuana. It's being prescribed by a doctor. It's ridiculous that it has, actually, it's not being prescribed, because the federal government won't let you prescribe it. It is recommended under state law. And the reason it can be recommended under state law is because it was the most-used medicine prior to the Food and Drug Act and all these things, the racist campaign in the 20s by Hearst and Harry Anslinger, these people who lied to us. Sanjay Gupta has recently told us, yeah, he was lied to by the DEA, who the police chief would like to be working with. Okay? This is a subject on which the people have continually led, and our appointed and elected rulers have dragged their heels, kicking and screaming the whole way. It's ridiculous. Anyplace you can put a CVS, you should be able to put a dispensary. A judge who heard one of the Superior Court cases said it best, hey, if there's too many, they'll put each other out of business. What are you trying to meddle with the free market for? I'm for, you know, bifurcation of recommendation. Most doctors wouldn't be associated with a clinic. It's a safe medicine, safer than aspirin. You can buy aspirin over the counter anywhere, not just a pharmacy. People die every year from aspirin overdoses. And were we aware of this? If we think that we are somehow comparable to Inglewood, we have never been to Inglewood. The lead singer of the Cali swag district was shot in the head in front of a liquor store in Inglewood. Doesn't always happen here in Santa Monica. So I would say these are false analogies. Now, what we see here is a very interesting camp, an alignment of the DEA, local law enforcement, fraternal organizations, and Mexican cartels, who hate medical marijuana, because it undercuts their other drug businesses. Because they sell heroin, eh, they sell weed. And so the reality is that when people can go to a safe source, they will. There's no reason why people should have to drive to the valley to get for $45 what they would have to pay for 65 on the west side, even in LA. Real estate prices are enough, that things are going to be expensive enough, we don't need to create unnecessary impediments to people who are sick getting their medicine. It's ridiculous. The idea, first off, you can't stop the cars, you know, people doing deliveries. That's going to happen no matter what you say. But the reality is, no one should have to have someone come to them. You can go to a dispensary, there's a wide array of products. I've worked in several.
Thank you.
And I got to say, people will make their own rules, private rules, that do all the things that she's worried about.
Thank you. Putans Solomon, Michael Chernus, Michael Feinstein.
Good evening. Appreciate you guys meeting with me today. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission first and foremost. My name is H. Solomon. I'm a resident here of Santa Monica, California, for over 15 years. Previously, I managed a medical marijuana dispensary. I'm writing to say that the, in particular, the maximum size of 2,500 square foot set forth by the DZO for the medical marijuana zoning is insufficient to properly serve patients. That size will not provide the needed facility to effectively serve patients, nor will it allow for the dispensary enough room to effectively operate. To meet the need of the patients, like that of West Hollywood, the maximum size should be increased to that of 4,500 square feet. Attached, I've got some pamphlets for everyone as well. Attached, you'll find a schedule listing of typical rooms that are found in a well-operated dispensary, together with a description of these rooms' functions. You'll also find a floor plan, which is typical of a dispensary. These two attachments are obviously conception-only. They are not for any particular dispensary. Instead, they are meant to illustrate how normal, typical, patient-oriented dispensaries would be configured to properly serve the patients here in Santa Monica. If a dispensary is too small, it'll lack the security and tend to be entirely about medical marijuana. On the other hand, a properly-sized dispensary tends to have a stronger security and typically offers herbal and holistic remedies beyond that of just medical marijuana. A small dispensary will not have enough space to adequately, for an adequate waiting room and dispensaries, and dispensing areas to promote patient privacy. Cannot have enough room for a training and education room for staff and patients, and will be insufficiently sized to provide the needed administrative storage and other areas, like ADA-compliant restrooms, as well as janitorial storerooms. Finally, the DZO indicates that a grow room cannot be larger than 100 square feet. If you know anything about medical marijuana, that's grossly inadequate for any sort of grow. In short, small dispensary tends to be a dinghy, where properly-sized dispensaries tend to be much nicer and patient-oriented. Santa Monica has stated that they're modeling its medical marijuana ordinance on that of West Hollywood, because it's a favorable outcome that the city has had in doing this. West Hollywood permits a dispensary the size of 4,500 square feet, which is no more than 1,500 square feet for the grow room. West Hollywood has put a great deal of thought into this issue, so that it's safe, nice, adequate, and patient-oriented dispensaries come to our city. I respectfully suggest that the city of Santa Monica follow the good example set by that of West Hollywood. I thank you for your time. If you've got questions, feel free to ask. Additionally, I'd like to also state, there was a memorandum that also came out that stated that you guys were looking for a commercial building on a second floor. I think that's just ridiculous.
Thank you.
It's more or less a poison pill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Chernus. Mr. Chernus, you have two additional minutes. Two speakers gave their time to you. Is Raquel Baldermas here? Okay. And Susie Savita-Jones? Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I, I hope you found my submission helpful on Monday. I apologize for the volume of material that I, that I sent each of you, but I wanted to give you the benefit of the information, particularly the information on the alleged linkage between crime and dispensaries in advance of the meeting, so that if you wanted to ask any questions, we could do that. I think the goal that we all share here is safe access to marijuana, and I'm gratified that, it seems everyone in the room, including Chief Seabrooks, who has spoken on the issue, recognizes the medicinal value of marijuana, so that's not really the debate at this point. Other cities have successfully stricken a balance between the concerns and past regulations that allow for safe access. It's not just West Hollywood, it's also Berkeley and San Francisco, which have had very longstanding programs for licensure of dispensaries with, some of them with numerical caps, others not, without the types of problems that Chief Seabrooks and others have suggested come with dispensaries. There's no reason why Santa Monica can't find the same level of success that those other cities have. There are, of course, legitimate concerns, and I agree with Chief Seabrook about some of the concerns, and also some of the proposed remedies to deal with those concerns. I also agree with the bifurcation of dispens- the bifurcation of dispensing and prescribing. And as someone who, until recently, lived in Venice, I was certainly not a fan of what was happening on the boardwalk. I don't think that's, serves anyone's interest in terms of, you know, Kush Doctor approaching people for prescriptions. In fact, it's actually illegal under the, under the Business and Professions Code. But in any case, Chief Seabrooks' concerns and the council, the commission's concerns can be addressed through a well-drafted regulation. While prohibition might be convenient and, and the most, the easiest avenue to take, I submit it's neither the right nor the fair result. And, and just as a side note, one of the, one of the points that Chief Seabrooks raised was the, or the conditions that she had requested, was that the dispensaries work in, in partnership with law enforcement. The clients that I have that run dispensaries in Los Angeles, or in the past that have run dispensaries in Los Angeles, welcome that kind of partnership. They welcome being able to maintain video records and sharing them with law enforcement and helping to be a vehicle and a tool to make the community better. In any case, I, I urge you to consider adopting an ordinance, or a draft zoning ordinance that does contemplate dispensaries. I, I strongly urge you also to consider four rather than two. I think that's the right number. Part of the reason for that is because when you look at West Hollywood as the closest analog, West Hollywood has four dispensaries and it has one-third the population of Santa Monica. West Hollywood's dispensaries, on average, given certain statistics, would serve an average of about 250 patients. The proposal for two dispensaries in Santa Monica, again, given the same statistics on the, the number of marijuana users, medical marijuana users, those dispensaries would have to serve about 2,500 patients. So by, by limiting us to two dispensaries, you're actually creating a greater level of parking problems and other potential problems. So again, I would urge you not only to reject the staff report in terms of it's suggesting that you disallow dispensaries, but to consider four as the appropriate number and perhaps broadening the area so that they're not centered in the healthcare district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Feinstein.
Good evening. In 1996, Santa Monica residents voted 71% in favor of Proposition 215, which was the California Medical Marijuana Initiative. And that was before it was trending that way around to the rest of the country. In 2010, Santa Monica residents voted 66% in favor of full legalization, Proposition 19. And in 2006, Santa Monica residents voted by 65% in favor of Proposition V, a local initiative that said marijuana enforcement should be our lowest priority of our police force. Medical marijuana is a legally permitted use that most users use responsibly, and it should be regulated as such and not discriminated against, for some decades-old reefer madness sort of paranoia. I believe that we should have four permitted uses in the community, in the hospital district, and a couple of our commercial boulevards. Some of the arguments against it were that, well, we can get it by delivery outside of the city. We can get pizza delivery, too, but it doesn't mean that our basic city planning goals of serving local needs locally, where you can walk and take buses, should go out the window just because we're talking about this legally permitted use. And on the issue of finances and banks, the fact is, fact is, the Attorney General of the United States is now coming up with guidelines for banks, driven by the experience in Colorado and Washington State. And we're going to benefit by that in California because they're going to find a way for banks to, to do it and go forward. I believe that you should set up a stakeholder task force to look at the recommendations of the police. That should include a couple Planning Commissioners, representatives of our public safety personnel, members of the ACLU, and other folks who operate these types of businesses. I have real concerns about the idea that people's individual medical histories, which is what medical marijuana is about, are, are, are subject to being filmed when anybody else who goes into a doctor's office doesn't have that. I think it's really inappropriate. I also think the idea of growing on-site makes sense. We talk about decentralization, not having large concentrations of power, again, doing something locally, not having to schlep, you know, materials around. I think both of those issues need to be looked at. But the overall questions about what are the civil liberties of somebody going into this business, I think, needs some very careful look. And it involves stakeholders. We did it with a very simple thing years ago with the promenade and street performers. And we brought all sorts of different people together. We came up with a great ordinance. I think you need to do the same thing here and not just leave it for the council to do in the middle of the zoning ordinance with 100 other things going on. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have questions. Commissioner Reese, and then Commissioner McKinnon, and then Commissioner Hemlrich.
Have you put any thought to what other zones or what other areas, or is that left to the task force?
I, I think that, like anything that we do, we want to involve a local neighborhood. So anything that I say now is in that context. But in Ocean Park, we've had our zoning group, we've talked about it. We've talked about the possibility of Main Street. We've talked about the possibility of Lincoln Boulevard. I think probably, given the history of this community, we shouldn't be saying on Pico Boulevard, given a lot of other issues we've had there. But I think possibly two commercial boulevards, along with the hospital district, would make sense. And let, and really direct staff to look at where, which boulevards might make the most sense.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McKinnon.
So is your argument that we shouldn't do something in the zoning code, or that we should do something provisionally and ask for a task force, or that we should wait until the task force reports?
I, I think that you should approve, you should, one, today, approve its use in the zoning code, number one.
And how many were you suggesting?
I believe that you should look at four and ask staff to analyze beyond the hospital district. And three, I think you should find a way to set up this task force so it can be looked at between now and when it goes to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hemlrich.
Well, I, I think the city needs another task force like it needs another arm, but anyway.
But this is a burning issue.
So how would you address Chief Seabrooks' argument that in West LA, for instance, in these unincorporated areas of Los Angeles, they have the 10,000 deputy sheriffs to enforce their laws, and we just have the poor Santa Monica Police Department, and this would be an added burden to them?
Well, number one, we could use that argument to say we shouldn't zone for banks or liquor stores in Santa Monica because even though most people use those responsibly, there's attendant issues with those as well. So I'm not sure that people's individual health needs should disqualify our police. I think our police are very capable. You know, for many years, we had, and still do, but we had, you know, very intense public safety issues with the people who are unhoused. And that's not something that a lot of police trained for, but our police came through, you know, quite well and didn't abuse people the way that we've seen in other cities. And I think they are very capable of doing things outside of the traditional that we ask our public safety personnel to do.
And my final question is this, since I think this is an area that you're interested in, are you aware of any model ordinance that would be, apart from West Hollywood, that would be a good model for us to adopt, should we adopt it?
I'm, I'm not, but that's why I think kicking into a task force with a couple of you guys and a couple of these other folks, because, you know, there's a lot of competing interests to manage this properly. So while I'm not aware of the models, I, I think there's a lot of folks who would happily submit those. And then we would find what works for our community, learning from those models.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One last question, Mike. So, Mike, I, I don't think the chief was advocating the videoing or the videotaping of people to record those with a medical history, but to capture those who might do them harm or damage. If you don't videotape, what is your suggestion to maintain a level of physical security for those who do want to get medical marijuana?
Banks and liquor stores have security guards.
Well, they also videotape, though, these days extensively. I mean, that's where the move
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm somebody who isn't on, with the program of massive videotaping.
No, I understand.
And the difference I see here compared to those other uses is that here, we're talking about a person's individual medical needs, and it's their business and nobody else's. So while it may be the case that individual banks choose to do, or liquor stores, we're not right, we're not saying by law they have to do that. And that's much more optional than people meeting their healthcare needs. And it just makes me uncomfortable. A long time ago, one of our council members said
I, I get that. I'm not asking that question. I'm asking the question of how we protect the people who may need the medical marijuana. And your suggestion is perhaps tighter security or something along those lines?
If, if our police department was said that we don't want to be filming people inside or entering such an establishment, what other options do you suggest? I think that's a question to be asked, and that's something that a task force could then look at and look at the civil liberty issues attendant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Alan Frankel, followed by Bill Leahy, and then Dr. Richard Jaleem.
My name's Alan Frankel. I'm a board-certified internist. I went to medical school internship, residency, and clinical faculty at UCLA, and then moved into Santa Monica, where I practiced medicine for 34 years. In the last seven years, I switched from my standard white coat medicine to practicing medical cannabis. And as an internist, I found the lack of dosing, the lack of consistency, to be impossible. So the last six years, I would say, of my life has been dedicated to standardization, dosing of non-smokable forms of cannabis. Medical cannabis in general was really lost. Its legality was lost, not because of Harry Anslinger, as much as it was by physicians in the, around 1915. Extracts of cannabis that came in bottles and were distributed at pharmacies were available from 1860 to 1940. However, by 1910, doctors stopped recommending it. And they stopped recommending it because it wasn't dosed. One bottle would be too strong, one bottle would be too weak. And they stopped using it. And that allowed Anslinger and DuPont and all the rest to come in and end it. Excuse me, it's getting over cold. Now, we obviously have all the testing equipment, and there's a model of medical cannabis that I think people need to know. And Santa Monica, I think, is a perfect place to do it. And that would be to have a store, a patient access center, that only did non-smokable, dosed by the milligram, not by grams, dosing accepted by physicians in the state of California, very solidly educational, and all dosed by the milligram. Educational involvement is something that I've been very involved with. I just got back from the state of Washington, testifying for their medical cannabis. And I'm, I think, one of the few doctors who have CME accreditation for teaching in medical cannabis nationally. I would love to see Santa Monica be the first place on this planet to have the future of medical cannabis. We're going through a revolution now. It's a huge renaissance. And with my patients, I see about 12 patients a day. They're very, very sick. They're much sicker than my internal medicine practice. And everyone is, every single patient is taking a dosed spray of CBD-rich, THC-rich, a dosed predictable, consistent medicine. And I think that could be just a wonderful, wonderful display for the world to see. I can certainly envision it where, and, and patients that smoke represent 20% of the population. Patients who don't smoke represent 80% of the population. 100% of my new patients in the last two years, excuse me, have been non-smokers. And they're, they're not interested in smoking. They're interested in dosed, consistent, measured, you know, sprays or capsules. And I think that's where medical cannabis is going. I think the federal government and the pharmaceutical companies are, for example, in Washington, and that was the reason I went there, trying to stop medical cannabis and leave recreational. We should have a dosed store. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frankel. There's a question for you. Commissioner Newbold.
I don't know much about medical marijuana. The, is it important to have that smokable option, or can some non-smokable form be used
Well, I think
For every case?
It's clearly smokable, smokable or vaporizable options work, but not knowing what you're taking, not knowing the dose, not how many milligrams of THC, CBD, terpenes. When you inhale, one puff, I'm not opposed to smoking cannabis. I mean, I
But my question is, are there people who have to get their medicine through a smokable form, or can it be, can the smokable form be replaced by some other form?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Not, not one of my patients smokes.
Thank you. There's another question for you, Commissioner Hemlrich.
So, so I have to say that one of the things that, that I think about is, when you have a liquid form and, and it becomes an edible that looks like any other kind of form of food.
This doesn't look like an edible. These are either 5 cc, 15 cc, milliliter, or 30 milliliters, dark purple spray bottles.
So it, is what you perceive
It's not an edible. It's, it's oral mucosal. It's not oral.
And, and it can't be turned into an edible?
Well, people eat forks and knives and spoons, so I guess, you know, fork can be turned into an edible.
But what you're talking about, it will not, as I understand it, be
This is in your medicine cabinet, not in your refrigerator.
I get it. But it won't be the standardized offering of all of the dispensaries in Santa Monica, is that right, if we have four dispensaries?
I doubt it. I mean, I've tried my hardest to have more and more stores get more serious about this dosed medicine. And of the groups of people that are more interested in smoking, they're less interested in dosed stuff. That's why none of my patients smoke, because they can put this in their medicine cabinet. It's not confused as an edible.
And, and people who are more interested in edibles are also more interested in edibles, maybe not smoking, but in cookies, or, you know, whatever it is.
If you take the average patient, which I think now my practice is, who has not smoked, they've not done edibles, they're just not cannabis people, and that's 80% of the population. When they are coming to medical cannabis as an option, often it's one of their last options. And they want dosed. They, and spray oral mucosal is, I mean, that's the most frequently used in pharmaceutical. It's the most, it will be the most frequently used in nutraceutical, which is what we're seeing the beginning of.
So it's 80% of the population of, 80, 80% of the population who have recommendations, or 80% of the population that you see?
If you have 100 average Americans, 20 of them will use smoked cannabis on some basis, 80% have not and will never use it. Like, if you came into your doctor
At all, at all, ever?
At all. Like, if you went to your doctor with blood pressure, and they recommended a smoked version of a blood pressure medicine, I don't think you'd be inclined to take it.
I hear
It's a good option, yeah.
I hear what you're saying. But so what you're saying, 80% of the population doesn't use any form of marijuana at all, and 20% does?
Yes.
So what I'm asking you is, of that 20%, how many of them prefer the method that you administer versus other methods of taking marijuana?
A minority. Probably less than half. I mean, that's why they're smoking. One of the reasons they're smoking.
Or eating.
Or edibles. I mean, edibles, I have, as a physician, I have real problems with edibles being recommended because they, you absorb from 10 to 50% of the medicine at any given time. They're very unpredictable, which I think most people in this room are aware of that.
Well, I think the thing that I, I'm sorry, I just, that I'm concerned about is that if there's no way to distinguish between, you know, a laced chocolate chip cookie and a non-laced chocolate chip cookie, then
But these are not cookies.
I know what you're talking about, but what I'm saying, what about everybody else?
Well, I think that's wrong. I wouldn't, but we're not talking
Okay, thank you. That, that's what I was getting at.
These should be in medicine cabinets.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Newbold, did you have a question? Okay. All right, the next speaker is Bill Leahy. And Bill, you've got eight minutes, which is the maximum because you've had other speakers donate their time. And Trina McDonald, are you here? And Richard McDonald, Susan Leahy, Jason McLeod, Robin, Sherry, thank you, and Kim Kendrick. All right.
May I ask, Aaron Justice behind me has to catch an airplane, and he asked if he could jump ahead of me, if that's okay with you?
Yes, can you please tell me your name again? Aaron Justice?
Yes.
Yes, you're in the queue, just a few speakers after, and go right ahead and
Okay.
Catch your plane. Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Aaron Justice, and I'm a medical cannabis patient, activist, and dispensary operator in Los Angeles. I'm here to support local and safe access regulations by Santa Monica. You know, we've been open since 2006 in Studio City, although I know that some of the things the police chief talked about have happened in the state. I think that has a lot to do with the lack of regulations. Even one lady stated how there was a legal dispensary on Pico. They're actually, in Southern California, one of the only places with regulations is West Hollywood, until about a few months ago that Los Angeles finally, after 18 years, enacted regulations. And so I think you see a lot of the problems at non-regulated places. We've never had those kind of problems with robberies or police. And you can And you can even take Harbor Side Health Center. It's in Oakland, high-crime city. They do about $75,000 a day, and they have for seven years. They have no armed guards. They've never been robbed. And I think there's a lot of places like that. I think dispensaries actually bring more security to a neighborhood. I mean, we're right next door to La Pan, and there was a guy walking down the street. He was drunk, and our security guards had to interact with him a couple times. He had nothing to do with our facility. And there was a contractor there, and he said, "Wow, I see why you guys need security." And I said, "No, this guy's walking down the street acting crazy. We're actually protecting a neighborhood right here," and we had the police come. And that just happened last week. We've never had that problem with our patients. The other thing is, we have dozens of patients from Santa Monica, and although I'm not concerned with many of them having to go outside of their area, maybe they work or they shop somewhere else, it's the most ill patients and the disabled patients that have the real issues. To travel can be troublesome, it can be expensive, and they suffer the most. And to send them into Los Angeles to visit a dispensary, Los Angeles, because of 18 years without enacting regulations, has a real problem. And four out of five dispensaries that are operating are illegal. So I don't know where these 10,000 police officers are, but they haven't shut down any marijuana shops, no matter how illegal and in their face they are. So I don't think that that's really an issue, or that you should send people there. It's hard enough for local residents in LA to know which dispensary is legit versus someone from a different city. Also, with delivery services, they're mostly banned. To have a driver come to your home is a risk. I mean, this guy could have been hired that day and fired that day. That's risky. Your neighbors see someone dropping off medical cannabis to you, maybe someone doesn't want their privacy or other people to know about it. And also, it's, they can't look at a bunch of different medicines, from topicals to smokables, to the oils. It's just not available that way. So I support regulations.
Thank you. There's a question for you.
Yeah.
And again, I'm just trying to understand, because I've never been to one of these facilities. Is it possible to have a medical facility, I mean, I think of it like a pharmacy, where you don't have the edibles and the lollipops and the smokables? Is that feasible?
No, I don't think that's realistic. I think that you need a wide variety of products for different illnesses. I mean, some people, they need to affect immediately, and they can do that by vaporizing or smoking.
So vaporizing is just a spray?
No, vaporizing, like, it vaporizes the medicine, but it doesn't burn it, so there's no smoke. You just get vapor, so it eliminates all health risks concerned with cannabis, which just come from carcinogens and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Leahy.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. I'd like to thank the commission for hearing me today. My name is Bill Leahy. I'm the spokesperson for Santa Monica for Safe Access, which is also known as Samosa. I sent you a PowerPoint, and I believe I also have some maps here for you, hard product, so that you can follow what I'm trying to say. And I'm here to discuss the dispensary area where dispensaries can be. And as soon as the draft zoning ordinance came out, Samosa immediately began to scout the area around the two hospitals and their campuses, and we have looked daily and very diligently, and we have not been able to find one compliant location. So having it in a particular place where there is no possible place for a location for us makes it very difficult. It is definitely a poison pill. We do like the area on Wilshire and Santa Monica Boulevard, because it does offer public transportation. Neighbors can walk, people can ride their bicycles, so there's many ways that they can go there. But first, I'd like to point out that we have some issues that we need to address, and one would be the distance from schools. I know that they took the information from the West Hollywood ordinance, it's at 500 feet, but the state of California in January 2011 mandated that it would be 600 feet from schools. So, and if you've read the Department of Justice memo, known as the COLE memo, they've required a thousand feet from schools of a drug-free zone. Samosa happens to be in favor of that thousand feet from schools. We have no problem with that. We think that that's fair and honorable. The other issue that I'd like to bring up is, last year, the city had a survey and found out that the number two issue in the city is traffic. If we were to have something around the two hospitals, it's only going to increase the traffic, which is already unbearable. We need to, we need to spread it out a little bit more. Dispensaries also need to be spread out a little bit more to service the city on a more realistic level. Also, the other thing is, in December of last year, the Santa Monica Daily Press ran an article that the residents felt that the parking was way too expensive around the hospital areas, $10 minimum for parking, which is really hardship for many people, especially sick and ill and people going there. So taking those things into consideration, what we have done is try to create alternative locations. I have three maps there for you. And if you'll look at the map, the red, the two areas that you've already designated in the draft zoning ordinance is bordered in red. And the Samosa ordinance, if you take map number one, or up in the left-hand corner, you see one, two, or three. But if you look at what we've done there, the green border is what Samosa has recommended to be the area that you can have a collective. And number one, we have gone west from Lincoln Boulevard, east to Yale Street. The reason that we did that is, if you look on the map, you'll see a number of red stars. Those red stars, there's 19 of them, they represent existing medical facilities already. So by going from Lincoln to Yale, there is a couple of stars just past that, but we felt that that was a reasonable area. And from Wilshire, south to Santa Monica Boulevard, this will allow some compliant locations. We don't know if the landlords will do that, but there are compliant locations in that. The negative side that we felt on that was, it might bring more traffic to downtown by allowing Lincoln Boulevard. So with that, we moved on to map number two. And if you look at map number two, what I've done there is, I have moved it from Lincoln Boulevard up to 14th Street, and from Yale, we moved it eastward to Centinela. Again, we're still from Wilshire Boulevard going south to Santa Monica Boulevard. What that does is it takes the traffic, potential traffic jam on downtown away, and also, if you, if you kind of look and see what's happening, the health district, if it's going to grow, it's not going to grow west, that's the ocean. It can only grow east towards Centinela. And if, when I read in the loose, they talked about actually extending the healthcare district from 14th to 26th Street. So there is a thought to move in that direction already. I think this is one of the better plans on that sort of a thing. On the third plan that I have there for you, I broke that up. I moved back down to Lincoln, to 14th Street, then there's a gap. Actually, what we did is border the two existing areas that you have now. And we, so we have from Lincoln Boulevard up to 14th Street, then we have a small no-go zone, and start again at the UCLA hospital, going on up to Centinela. So, these are three options that we feel that will benefit and bring to forward an ability to have collectives that are dispensaries, that will better service the community, and also that there will be some possible locations that we actually can be able to go into. So, I think that pretty well encompasses most of what I need to present on that. If there are some questions that you would like to ask on that, I'll be more than happy to avail myself to any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay, no questions?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay, well, then, thank you very much.
The next speaker, I think I mispronounced your name earlier, is Dr. Richard Lobb, followed by Diane Goldstein.
Thank you very much for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Dr. Richard J. Lobb, and I'm here to address the question of the testing of medical marijuana samples. My PhD, 1974, is in analytical chemistry, and I've been a practicing chemist for over 40 years. I was a chemistry professor for many years at Ohio State University, and then for many more years at San Diego State University. I'm currently the owner and founder of Lobb Biochemicals Corporation, which is a California C corp that was incorporated in the fall of 1995. I'm also the co-founder of Merimed Analytical Services, California S corp, that was begun in 2012. Among other things, Merimed carries out testing of marijuana materials, including plant samples and extracts for dispensaries throughout Southern California. Now, I previously submitted written documents to you regarding inclusion of a potency testing requirement of any and all medical marijuana dispensaries that may be approved by Santa Monica. I would like to offer this evening additional rationale in favor of mandatory testing of medical marijuana for your consideration. To begin, it seems to me it's simply a matter of common sense that any medication, be it over-the-counter or prescription, be well-characterized in terms of content. For example, you would not want to go into a drugstore for aspirin without being able to determine from the label, first, that the bottle actually contains aspirin, and, second, the aspirin content of the tablets, whether 81 milligrams, 325 milligrams, 800 milligrams, or whatever it might be. Similarly, you would not want to take a prescription medication without knowing that the identity and amount of active ingredient in the bottle corresponded to those which your doctor prescribed for you. And so, a person, the same can be said for the constituents of marijuana products. Different compounds, that is cannabinoids, in such products correspond to different physiological effects. And so a patient purchasing such products needs to know, at the very least, what's in the material he or she is purchasing, and of course, how much of each ingredient is present. These determinations can only be made by proper testing of such products in an appropriately-staffed and equipped analytical laboratory. Now, some would argue that testing isn't valid because of the lack of pure standards, a paucity of proven analytical protocols, and so forth. These arguments are patently false. Again, I submit to you, it's simply a matter of common sense to mandate testing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. There's a question for you. One moment, please.
So, in your interactions with the dispensary folks-
Yes, ma'am.
Are they opposed to what you're suggesting?
No, in fact, the dispensaries that I've contacted, and it's dozens now over the last two years, are welcoming me with open arms. As a matter of fact, they want to know what's in their samples.
And do you, as, do you feel the way that Dr. Frankel felt about smokables, edibles versus vapor, versus sprays, et cetera? Delivery systems, I guess, would be the way?
I have to say, from a personal standpoint, I'm an ex-smoker of cigarettes. I quit 20 or 30 years ago or so. And so I certainly agree with him that smoking anything is not a healthy thing to do. But in terms of edibles, or vaporizers, or skin lotions that are also available, for example, I think those are valid methods of taking in a measured identifiable dose of marijuana constituents.
Well, what, so what about people who turn other products into edibles, say, or something? Then you lose the value of what you do? Would that be right?
No, that's not correct. We can certainly test, for example, the oils used to make the edibles, or the butter used to make the edibles. Doing the edibles themselves is also not a problem. It's more complex from a chemistry standpoint, but it's certainly feasible.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that, once a consumer gets the oil and uses it in a recipe, for instance, then you have no sense of how much they're getting of anything. Is that right?
No, that's not true. If a person uses a certain amount of oil with a certain cannabinoid content into an edible, it's a simple matter of converting, I used five grams of this and diluted that, essentially, to 100 grams of edible material, so the final concentration is 1/20 of what I started with. Cooking marijuana, for example, in an edible, or making a cookie, for example, by oven processes or whatever, only serves to convert THCA material, one of the cannabinoids, into THC, one of the psychoactive materials. That's about the only effect.
So where were you when I was in college? That's what I would-
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Diane Goldstein.
It's Diane Goldstein.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem.
And I just, is Sam Sabazir, Sabazar here?
President.
Fantastic. And Nathan Peddington? Thanks, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Distinguished planning commission members, thank you for the opportunity to present the view of Law Enforcement Against Prohibition, who I represent, as well as being a spokesperson for Santa Monica's for Safe Access. I'm a retired Redondo Beach Police Department lieutenant, and in fact, if it wasn't for Chief Jackie Seabrook, I probably would not have been promoted, because she spent a little bit of time with me and helped mentor me. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the city of Santa Monica and the police department itself, because I have actively worked with them during my career. In spite of that, I do differ with her opinion about the appropriate control and regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries. Currently, both myself and Law Enforcement Against Prohibition are in favor of authorizing medical marijuana dispensaries within the city, taxing sales and regulating the time, place, and manner of sales. As a career law enforcement professional, in my experience fighting both gangs and narcotics, I came to the conclusion that it is the illicit black market and prohibition itself that fuels the crime that concerns law enforcement surrounding public safety. I'm a representative of LEAP, an organization of over 100,000 current and former criminal justice professionals and civilian supporters, with over 5,000 supporters in California. We are cops, sheriffs, prosecutors, judges, prison guards, and others from nearly every level of law enforcement. As a retired law enforcement professional, I know that the voice of police is crucial in the dialogue about drug policy. The one area where law enforcement is qualified to speak regarding medical marijuana is, in fact, in the area of public safety. But we cannot forget that patients need to have access to adequate amount of medicine, and they do not need to search for that medicine in the streets, risking their safety and the community's safeties as well, and only benefiting the illicit drug dealers. Patients need dispensaries as a secure and safe place to access medicine. Forcing patients to go into the streets or to other cities to buy marijuana benefits the criminal element and threatens patient's safety. Giving patients a safe local option to get their medicine is sound policy that will, in fact, enhance and contribute to public safety. In addition, I'd like to speak to the two aspects in the staff report from Chief Seabrook in the Santa Monica Police Department relating to crime. I'm not going to go into the details of the studies, as they were included in the documents that I sent, as were other documents that speak to them. But there have been multiple academic peer-reviewed scientific research done around the issues of crime relative to medical marijuana dispensaries. And what all the research that I have read has found, that the density of medical marijuana dispensaries was not associated with violent crime or property crime rates. There is no increase in crime associated with properly regulated medical marijuana operations. There are, in fact, many law enforcement agencies that are successfully regulating medical marijuana dispensaries, not just in California, but across our nation, that were not mentioned in the police department staff report. Some examples locally include the cities of Richmond, Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, West Hollywood, and I was reminded Sacramento as well, the heart of our capital. And in all those cities, there have been no spikes in crimes surrounding a properly regulated storefront operation. And in fact, in the city of Richmond, which is a very high-crime area, the fees from the dispensaries pays for an entire police department compliance unit that monitors not just the medical marijuana dispensaries, but other businesses as well, including bars and restaurants and nightclubs. So, a last concern raised in the staff report is the matter of cash. First, you've already heard that the U.S. Attorney General Eric Holder announced that guidelines would be issued to banks sanctioning servicing legal marijuana businesses. guidelines would be issued to banks sanctioning servicing legal marijuana businesses. Furthermore, since 1996, and in the last few years, we've already seen that there are banks servicing these businesses. And most marijuana dispensary owners that I work with and that I have gone in and done tours of, basically use sound cash handling practices that can include cash pickup, cashless ATMs, and all sorts of other ways to ensure that there is not that much cash in hand. And in fact, probably several years ago, when the city of Los Angeles was going through the same search of trying to link the nexus between crime and dispensaries, Chief Charlie Beck famously noted that the banks themselves are more prone to robbery than many businesses, let alone medical marijuana dispensaries. I'd like to close by saying illicit and criminal distribution of marijuana would be greatly reduced by Santa Monica adopting reasonable rules and permitting regulated medical marijuana dispensaries.
Thank you.
And I do agree that you need to get the stakeholders together.
Thank you.
Which includes patients, the police, and others that have something to say.
Thank you, there's a question for you from Commissioner Anderson.
I may be misspeaking here, but I believe in a previous iteration of the staff's recommendation, there was a proposal to allow dispensaries in office settings as opposed to retail settings. And I'm curious if you see a public safety differential in those two locations.
Well, I think that the issue is with office settings, I mean, there's different types of office settings. My concern with office settings would be, is because you do have a lot of patients with disabilities, is, in order to make certain that there was access that was sufficient for them with regard to elevators, sufficient parking, those types of things.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinnon has a question for you, too.
The chief ran through a series of precautions that she wanted us to take on board. Did you have any additions, or were there any things that you felt could be struck out?
You know, here's the thing, is, every city is different. And I, in dispensaries that I have toured, I'm neither a patient, nor am I a recreational marijuana consumer, but in order to talk about this issue, I have gone up and down through the state of California, and have met with business owners, and looked at security protocols. I'm not a security consultant. But what I will tell you is that there are retired law enforcement members out there currently who are security consultants for the medical marijuana industry, that can, in fact, work together with the police department and whatever ordinance is there. I've seen everything from videos, not when patients are being prescribed medicine, but to cover the cash and where the medicine is stored. There's security guards, there is biometrics to enter their safe rooms, there's a tremendous amount of alarms and things that I think are going to be dependent on an individual community.
And finally, because you know the chief, and you obviously know the Santa Monica Police Department, and you worked in a police department adjacent, it would be fair to say that of all the cities where we put somewhere like a medical marijuana dispensary, this would have to be the best, one of the best police cities anywhere in the state of California if we were to put it here?
Absolutely. The city of Santa Monica and Santa Monica Police Department have been heads and tails with regard to their professionalism. I started in 1983, I retired in 2004. And I think the one thing that I was very happy to hear today is that the California Police Chiefs Association, for years, has undermined medical marijuana and patients' rights. I was very happy to hear Chief Seabrook not spout their standard line, which is, there is no medical marijuana. She respects and understands that it's the role of law enforcement to basically look at public safety, give their recommendations, but if, in fact, the council and the commission write an ordinance that says, this is what's going to happen, I have the most confidence that the Santa Monica Police Department can rise to that occasion based on their professionalism and their experience. And in fact, quite frankly, given the nature of Santa Monica, I'm surprised that you don't already have medical marijuana dispensaries in this city.
What did you, were you hoping the commission would focus on this evening?
I believe we'd like to focus the first part of the discussion on the medical marijuana dispensaries. We have staff members here who are familiar with that topic, and we're hoping to maybe knock that out tonight, for starters.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Commissioner McKinnon, you've been also waiting.
I was going to talk auto dealers, but I can, I suppose, talk about medical marijuana.
Well, all right, then.
Multi-talented and multi-thinking.
There you go, then you can start.
Bifurcated ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was very low-level today. So, in many ways, I think this is, for me, a very simple discussion, because having worked around public health and public hospitals for a long time, the adage that was given to me very early on was to follow the science and the medicine, to see what you would do. And it is, I think, reasonably clear that medical marijuana has a significant role in dealing with certain clinical problems that people have, particularly multiple sclerosis and glaucoma, and management of pain. And therefore, with major hospitals in our city that deal with these aspects, and a great many medical practitioners, the issue for me, then, is how we structure appropriate regulations to solve the problem, the medical problem that people have. And that will be my focus this evening, because I think, whether it's one, or two, or three dispensaries, if we structure it the right way, we will get a very reasonable outcome, which will satisfy the needs of the medical practitioners and the people that need the medicine that we're going to provide through these dispensaries. And even the police chief this evening, who came and spoke, was not saying you shouldn't do it, but that there are major issues that you need to consider and deal with in terms of the regulations. And so, at the end of this evening, I hope that we have some clear regulations about where we might put it, under what circumstances we might put it, and what the safeguards are we need to put in place. And we've heard conflicting testimony from people and from the planning department about what is the appropriate distance? Is it 600 feet from a school, or 1,000 feet? Should it be on the first floor of a medical facility, or should it be on the ground floor to allow people with disabilities easy access? Should there be video, or should there be absolutely no video, because that strips the civil rights of people? And so, that's, for me, what the discussion is here, and it's a very practical discussion that we would bring to, for example, a regulation of nuclear isotopes at, say, John Wayne Cancer Facility, or if you were dispensing Vicodin, or any of those sorts of extremely dangerous drugs that come through pharmacies or chemists on a daily basis, what are the safeguards you'd put in place? And so, that, I think, is the discussion. For me, the policy discussion was relatively easy, and now it's about the regulation of that. So, in starting this, that's my starting point.
Commissioner...
Because I think it is, I think it is a double thing. It's a policy, do we want to endorse a medical marijuana facility in Santa Monica, or two, or three? And then, how do we structure our regulations around it? You solve the policy first, and then you work out the rest.
Commissioner Newbold, and then Commissioner Hamorich. Oh, you did, I thought you had, Commissioner Hamorich, did you have something to add?
I, I agree with Commissioner McKinnon that this is an important tool in medicine's toolkit for various conditions. And I say this, and I don't talk about this much, but I had a stem cell transplant in 2006. And, and in the course of it, I spent three weeks in the hospital, and you could, I mean, this was something that, had it been available, the people, all of whom were getting stem cell transplants, on my floor, would have been so much better off, because they were on feeding tubes and having all sorts of things that might have been really quite unnecessary. You know, and then you look at, again, glaucoma, and MS, and, you know, various other diseases. So, I think it is, you know, and, and arrow that can be used if it's available. That being said, I'm also aware that there is, and I understand what the chief is saying, that there is a dispensary at the corner of Pico and Sentinela, which is just on the other side of the Santa Monica line. So, and I'm guessing that there are others in fairly close proximity, that just happens to be the one that, you know, that I've been by and know about. So, I agree that it's available other places, but I do think we should have it. We've been a leader in these things, I think we're way behind on this, I don't know why we're way behind on it. And I just did, I looked a little bit at other cities' regulations, I think there are ways to regulate it, where you don't end up having a shooting match at the dispensary, you know, at night. I mean, but you have to locate it in a proper area, where there's light, and when there, you know, and that sort of thing, all of the things that the chief was saying. So, it's why I had her listed, and I promised Commissioner Reese I would tell him what her conditions were. So, her conditions were, A, video monitoring, which former Mayor Feinstein really disagrees with, he doesn't want his picture taken walking into the dispensary; B, limited access, meaning that you have to be buzzed in, or whatever, you can't just walk in, which is, I understand generally what happens; C, cooperation with prosecutorial authorities, that's part of the, by the way, limited acts, everything except for the video monitoring is already part of the West Hollywood ordinance; cooperation with prosecutorial authorities, inspections, signage, saying no trespassing, no loitering, et cetera. No...
Grow, no growing.
Oh, right, no growing on the premises. And I don't really have a problem with that.
Many people do, but that's a discussion we can have later.
Right. And that, and finally, the municipal attorneys will have more ideas. But, but what she outlined here in terms of the precautions are essentially what I saw in the West Hollywood ordinance, and in the Oakland ordinance, and all of the cities that the later speaker referred to.
There was one, there was one other she added in questioning, that was the bifurcation of the dispensing from the prescribing.
Oh, right, right, right. Where did that go?
I asked the question, and she added it. And that's, I think, a fairly essential thing, so that you can't walk in...
Oh, there it is.
... and get prescribed on the spot, which takes away a lot of the itinerant trade that you get, you have on the Venice Boardwalk, where you, as you walk along, you can get a prescription.
Wait, so what is the condition?
So, in other words, you, in some places, you walk in, and you can get your prescription on the spot. They have a doctor sitting there who will give you the recommendation in the dispensary.
I understood the implication, I didn't understand, what did you recommend as a condition?
Oh, no, simply that there be no prescription on the, at the facility, so you'd have to get it from somewhere else before you arrived. And it may be a two-stage thing, but I think we, you really do then drive it into the pharmaceutical end of things, as opposed to kind of a dressed-up recreational use.
So, those were the conditions, and those seem to be the conditions, including the no prescribing on premises. And there's another one that she didn't mention, but I saw they have in various cities, which is, no use on the premises. So, you know, again, I don't know if that makes it, you know, but, but that was another one that I saw in other cities. So, there are various things that, you know, can be done, that, that make this, you know, something that won't result in the gang warfare that some people are dreading here.
May I ask a question about the inspections?
No, go ahead.
Inspections? Was that specific, what was getting inspected?
That the police be able to come in and do inspections of the premises, and that that chemist be able to come in and test for the...
But what were they inspecting?
That wasn't clear to me.
It's, in others, in other ordinances, it's clear that the police can exercise their police power, and, you know, make sure that they are properly accounting for cash, and, you know, stuff, and that they aren't, I don't know, doing whatever people could do.
You know, there are...
I just wonder if that's a police...
There are some issues with that. This is, after all, a medical facility, and we don't allow police to just interrogate doctors in terms of their patients. So, there has to be a clear focus on the medicine and the science, even with the police supervision of the same. And some of those, I think, just, we have to have some clarity, and maybe, you know, if we ask our planning department to draft it up, you need to think more about that. But, but again, the issue needs to be, are we going to do this?
Well, I guess, are we sort of saying sort of where we stand on it, so we can try to move this forward?
Well, my suggestion was, is this, if we agreed on the policy, then let's get into the nitty-gritty of...
Well, so, I'm gonna...
Yeah, go.
I guess we all have to say where we stand on the policy. I guess I came here tonight skeptical, and I've sort of been won over by listening to the conversation here tonight. So, I'm, I'm open to considering, considering this, as long as we have the proper kind of guidelines and plays and protections that we've talked about.
Commissioner Anderson.
I guess, I like the way that some of these conditions of the chief, and the way Commissioner McKinnon has framed it as trying to focus on making sure that the use of this dispensary is as medical as possible and as non-recreational as possible. And, I mean, to that end, I, I thought staff's original proposal about, and, I was about to say, am I crazy again? Which I thought was the only, it was only being allowed in, in office space, and it wasn't being allowed, is that what this says? I couldn't... It says 2,500 square feet, only in the healthcare district.
Right.
But only on the second floor, too, or only in an office setting?
That's in the supplemental staff report.
Oh.
And in the supplemental, we added some additional conditions, which included recommending that you could prohibit it on the ground floor, limiting it to a maximum of 1,000 square feet, prohibiting installing exterior signage, and essentially setting it up in more of an office-type environment. The PD also had some concerns about queuing, so if you were inclined for more regulations, you could require that prescriptions only be filled by appointment, so, you know, there's a set time, and you know when you're going, so there wouldn't be a queuing concern. And, and you could even restrict the maximum number of patients in a given timeframe. So, that's on page five of the supplemental staff report.
I know, it seemed to me that restricting the dispensaries to an office setting would be a step towards getting, towards the kind of character that you had described, Commissioner McKinnon.
Commissioner Reese.
Well, I'd be, I would, I think long short of it is, I would be supportive of doing this with some proper conditions. I mean, I think the concept of not doing it in the city is hypocritical, and I'm trying to get away from, from our zoning, having those hypocritical portions to it, that somehow it's okay that, you know, 77% of our, of our citizenry voted for the use of medical marijuana use, and it's okay to have our trips go into other communities. So, I would be supportive with some restrictions in the, in the community. And what I've heard so far, in terms of conditions, obviously, we're going to look at a little closer, I think I need more understanding of what the inspection is, because if it's inspecting money, then all of a sudden, our police are going to be accountants, and that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me. So, I'd like a little more definition on what the, and I apologize, I wasn't here when the police chief spoke, so I would like to know more, get a better understanding of what they're talking about in terms of inspections. I do think that the size of 1,000 square feet just seems small to me. Well, it's gone, there's been a few numbers mentioned around, and so, we need to kind of come up with that. And then, I don't know where I am with this, the grow, no grow, on, on site, because, you know, if, if you grow on site, then you don't have to have those trips coming out. But, but I think we just need to talk about that a little bit.
Certainly, I think 1,000 is too small, a facility. And when you've got two major hospitals, and a, just an enormous array of specialists clustered in Santa Monica, in a, you know, major healthcare setting, and Ronald Reagan, which is a Level VI speciality hospital not far away, you could find quite a lot of demand emanating from within our city. And so, one of the features about it needs to be big enough, so that people come in and can be put in places where they have a consultation. That is how you solve the no line out the door. But you don't want to have an only... But you don't want to have an only, an appointment-only situation, in that you want people to be able to get the medicine when they need to get it. And so, we can't be sure when someone comes out of a specialist or a doctor's office and is told, you now need to take some of this medication, when that will happen. And, you know, if you've been to a doctor, it can, you can be waiting an hour and your appointment goes, or two hours, or whatever. So we need some flexibility. I think what the chief was saying in terms of inspection was making sure that the conditions of whatever we put on it were met, and so that they would have the right to enter the facility and just make sure that there were four waiting rooms and that there were five staff members and all that sort of stuff. I didn't get the feeling it was inspecting medical records or supervising any of that sort of stuff. I had one question for the planning department. You had a line in there that said, "Only marijuana grown in California." Was that a by-local thing, or, I mean? It's state law? I mean, I know this is an oddity, but a marijuana plant requires 60 gallons of water to grow it, and we are in one of the worst droughts ever. So there may come a moment when the availability of marijuana from California is not as easy as it is at the moment. So we're still constrained.
If that would be the case of luck, certainly it could be amended.
But it's state law at the moment.
As far as I believe.
And that may be why the growing facility is...
Yeah. Yeah.
So then the second question is, 1,000 feet or 600 feet from the school? There was some testimony that there was a, a conflict between what you'd written and what is required.
The, the law was changed, as you said, in, I forget, 2011, the state law that required 600 feet from the school, which is, we can certainly change that, that's not a problem.
Federal law requires 1,000.
And they were recommending, they were recommending 1,000.
Did you get him, Attorney? I didn't quite hear what you said.
Not less than...
Not less, yeah.
Yeah, hold on a second.
The state, the state law does provide 600.
100, so you couldn't do less than that, but I believe you could do more.
And was there any reason for the first 2,500 and then 1,000-foot size that you were suggesting to us?
Well, in the supplemental, we recommended, again, it'd be above the, the ground floor.
Right.
And we thought that smaller, smaller spaces for the dispensaries would really make it more like an office, a medical office, where you could go in and get your prescriptions as opposed to a larger retail spot, where you might need larger space on the ground floor.
But it's, this is, the nature of this is not really a medical office. The nature of this is, it's a very unusual hybrid that we're putting in place, because as Commissioner Newbold found, there's a range of things that satisfy different needs of different patients, whether they're that lollipop thing to, I believe the expression is bong, or vaporization. But, so there are those needs, people vary in terms of what their requirements are. And there's also that other, there's still a social issue about people using medical marijuana, and there's clearly a higher need for privacy than people going into a normal pharmacy. So maybe there's a need for space.
There could well be. Again, it was a recommendation, if you think it should be larger, you certainly can recommend that to the council.
Well, and, and let me just add on to that, that even when you're in a, in a pharmacy-
Right.
-they make you stand back for HIPAA purposes, a certain amount, so that people do have privacy, and if this is a medical use. The other thing is, I view it more, you know, that those compounding pharmacies, which are, are sort of smaller places where they actually, and I think 1,000 square feet is small for this. They do need back office spa, you know, I mean, there are other things they need, they have employees. I mean, it seems to me that 2,500 is more appropriate, I'm not sure I would go to 4,500.
Well, I think some of that's, what we should set as a maximum size-
All right.
...and then allow it in the hands of whoever's going to run it. And you've suggested a co-op, right? You've suggested a cooperative.
And that's required by state law.
Right.
Is that true?
Excuse me, we've already heard-
I'm sorry, it's collective, not a cooperative.
We've, we've had public testimony this evening, thank you very much, but public testimony's over for the night.
So, what do we want to do, craft some regulations?
We have a real chair.
Oh, yes.
What about the task force? Wait a minute, are we gonna have a task force?
We're hearing from the chair on the policy.
Well, there's a couple of things I'd like to say. First, you know, about the video, the video surveillance, you know, I think in CVS, Walgreens, and other places, there are video cameras on you actually at the pharmacy while you're purchasing your medicine. So I'm not sure why it wouldn't be a tool in this instance as well.
Because there's a stigma, still.
Okay. Well, yeah, well, I kind of felt a little bit like Commissioner Newbold coming into this, and had some concerns. And after listening to the testimony and reading the staff report and hearing from staff and through this discussion, I'm opposed to allowing, to authorizing, to, I'm opposed, I'm very hesitant to consider this method of authorization. I do not think that, I like the staff recommendation, and I personally support the staff recommendation. I don't think that this is the appropriate use in the HC district, and I also am opposed to it in the Wilshire corridor, especially in the areas that were proposed tonight by Samosa. And I, and I would like to see if we're, if the staff is going to, because I apparently appear to be in the minority of this, in this, is if the staff is going to go ahead and look at some of these other conditions and tighter regulations, to look more closely at the areas. And I know that the staff report was, had some preliminary information about investigating other parts of the city for this, but I think that there could be more work done. To give you an example about my opposition to having any of this happen in the hospital areas or in the Wilshire corridor, even with the 1,000 or 2,000 or 600-foot radius, on Wilshire Boulevard, there's the University of Santa Monica, there are, there's a preschool at a church on 18th and Wilshire. PS1 is immediately adjacent to the area that they outlined in the map that we were given during public testimony. There's a Head Start preschool, there's a preschool at 23rd and Wilshire, I'm sorry, 22nd and Wilshire, McKinley School. And those are just the ones that I could think of off the top of my head. And so, my feeling overall, and again, my viewpoints maybe come from a position of public safety, but, and again, the staff report does address the issues of being close to schools and daycares. I think we need to think closely about how many are in this area, at least that the staff is, is proposing. I'm supportive of medical cannabis use in private setting, and I am not in favor of uses that the police chief spoke about this evening, wherein the use of medical cannabis takes place outside in public areas near the dispensaries. Perhaps, you know, maybe, I mean, some of these views may appear to be conflicting or contradictory, and it's really just, you know, reflecting my consideration of the complex issue. But I think that the public safety issues, and the ones that the police chief brought up about the cash-based business issues, the proximity to numerous schools and others, I'm opposed to this, and I support the staff recommendation, extremely support the staff recommendation, wholeheartedly.
So it appears to me there's four people kind of in favor of it, some of us more strongly than others, and one a little hesitant. But persuadable.
Like, I, you know, I've heard a lot of information tonight, and, I mean, I'm opposed to it tonight, and I may be opposed to it in the future. But I have a, I'm very flexible, and I'm always open to considering new information. And at this point, I would consider myself extremely hesitant to consider this method of authorization.
And just a reminder, as with the other provisions of the zoning ordinance update that you've been reviewing, you're just giving a sense of the commission tonight, and obviously it's not until you, you see the red line, or blue line, I'm not sure what color it'll be, that you would be giving a formal recommendation. But as you have done in the past, you certainly can give a sense of where the commission is.
So now you have a sense? Do you want more of a sense?
Yeah, right.
Is that enough of a sense, or you need more?
I think we have enough of a sense.
I don't know, I mean, I'm hearing differences between comfort level of office setting versus retail setting.
Yeah, I would say we cross the threshold of, of do we think it's appropriate, and now it's, we're getting into kind of, we gotta give our, some of these conditions. And I don't know if staff wants us to go further in the conditions, because I agree, that's not, that's, we haven't really addressed that.
We need to have that discussion, I think.
And we haven't really discussed an area of where it, of where it's going, of where it would be permitted. And I think that we should kind of give staff a sense on that, and, and then talk about some of these other conditions.
And also the maximum number of dispensaries that we would allow in the city as well?
Right. So does anybody want to take a, do we want to take a stab at, let's, that, that one right there, which is how many in the, in the community?
Yeah, I just like to, I think it would be valuable for the commission to describe what you, you know, if you were to allow it, what you would want to see. I just want to point out that, you know, the staff's recommendation was to not allow these, and that was based on input from the police department and other considerations. So when you see a red line, chances are, you will still see staff's recommendation as it's currently written in the supplemental staff report. But where we differ from the commission's recommendation, we will want to write that up and describe it in the council's staff report, what your thoughts and ideas were. So it is important to articulate those so that we can include those when we eventually get to city council. But I'm just pointing out that, you know, that the staff recommendation likely won't change on this issue, and the red line may not be changed to reflect the commission's direction.
But you may hear some conditions that you think are good ideas that you would include in your red line, even though you're still recommending that we don't do it, correct? No?
Well, if we're recommending that we don't do it.
But you have it here.
Well, because our recommendation has actually changed since the original drafting of the...
I got you, I got you, so that was come out.
Yeah, yes.
So, Mr. Martin, why even have us discuss it?
Yeah, that's pretty-
I mean, that's ridiculous. I'm sorry, and it's the first time I've ever used it. You bring the zoning update to us, and you give it to us, and say, "Talk about it," but you know what? It really doesn't matter what you have to say, because if you vote for this, our recommendation is to do something different, and so we're gonna keep putting that forward, and we'll put it forward to the council. I mean, I just find that a very difficult proposition, to have us discuss something that you're not going to change, especially something as difficult as this. You consistently say at the beginning of meetings, "You know what? We've brought the zoning update to you as the community to discuss it over 12 meetings, and we think that's enough." But then, ultimately, you say to us on something as difficult as this, that we're expressing and searching for a consensus, "It doesn't matter what you say, because we're recommending differently," even before we start. I mean, I-
No. And I certainly am not saying that it doesn't matter what you say, it's very important what you say, and whatever your recommendation is to the city council, we will convey that to the city council. But it's just like on, on a project, on a development agreement project, for example, the commission makes a recommendation, and then staff still has their recommendation to city council. So what goes to city council in that case is staff's recommendation, as well as the planning commission's recommendation. Where we agree, you know, we point that out, where we differ, we go to great lengths to also point that out, so the commission, so the council knows that the commission has a different opinion. But that's the way it will work in this case, that's the way it works with projects.
I was under the impression, and, and this could be wrong, that as a legal matter, the planning commission's role is different in connection with a zoning ordinance than it is in connection with a development agreement, for instance. Now, the city attorney maybe can address this more, but I believe that we have a more active role in the zoning ordinance than we do in the, in a DA, for instance.
I think they're, they're both by ordinance, so I think it's both the same. I mean, I agree, as David clarified, I mean, you are formally charged with giving, or you are charged with giving a formal recommendation to the council on review of the zoning ordinance, so your, what, what you recommend needs to be conveyed to the, to the council. I think what David was indicating, that if staff disagrees with that recommendation, that will also be forwarded to the, the council. But there's no question that your review of this document and your recommendation must be forwarded to the council, so the council understands what your recommendation is.
Well, but the impression that I'm getting is that the council is going to be given an ordinance that says, "No marijuana dispensaries," and by the way, the planning commission doesn't agree.
No, you're gonna see an ordinance that's gonna say, "No marijuana dispensaries," and somewhere buried in a staff report is going to say, "Oh, by the way, your commission doesn't want that." So I'm, you know, I've been told not to speak when you have nothing good to say, and I'm really upset about this. And we've worked really hard on this planning, on this planning commission, and to do these zoning code updates, and to hear it so blatantly stated that your opinions are nice, but we don't really care, is really frustrating to me. And I've been on this for six years, and this is really a very low point in my morale on doing this work.
I would, all right, so I'm gonna take this opportunity to make a proposal. What could possibly happen as this discussion progresses this evening is if what we've talked about so far is that the staff wants, or needs, or whatever, a sense of what the commission is thinking, but that a recommendation isn't going to be going forward to city council for a while, until we've wrapped up our review of the draft. Maybe the commission can perhaps make a list of, and agree to have a list of some of the conditions and issues that were brought up tonight. Commissioner Himmrich, I believe, started to list some of them, inspections, and the radius, and the location, and get from the staff a supplemental on this issue. So we have this staff report, they can bring us more focused information on that to help you then make your recommendation, whereas they just need the sense now. But the, but you're saying you need more detailed information, so to, to help you make that recommendation, however forceful, forceful you want that recommendation to be, then you have all of the tools in your toolbox to be able to do it.
Chair, I'd like to say that that, I think, is all well and good. But, Mr. Martin, you may represent the planning department and the people that work for the city council, but we represent the people out in the community, that's what you keep reminding us. But what you told us this evening was that it did not matter what we said. So I don't know why you just don't send your staff report, your planning department reports straight to the city council, because unless we agree with you, you're not inclined to put it in there. And I'm not, I don't think that's a good idea at all. I don't even know why, for example, I got on a plane and flew for 16 hours to get back here so you could dismiss what I had to say. That is not acceptable to me under any shape, direction, or form. I don't think that's why a planning commission is set up. If you think that's what it is, then we're all wasting our time here. I think that what Commissioner Reese is saying this evening, and you have a very unhappy set of people sitting here at this moment, speaking entirely for myself, Commissioner Reese may have a different point of view, Commissioner Himmrich or others, but it's just not a reasonable proposition that you've put to us. I do not see why we would spend another minute here, Chair, this evening, under those circumstances. It's just, you don't, you don't care, you're not gonna pass on the point of view, so what?
I would suggest, I would suggest that we're, what we should do, commission, is go ahead and make our recommendations on these conditions, because we're already started this discussion, and call it a night and get out of here.
Can I just respond to the comment?
Please respond.
Because you said that we're not going to put your, your positions forward, and that's not at all the case.
No, I understand that.
We, we will, you know, again, we will convey to the council what the commission's recommendation is. And I apologize if it seems like we're going to ignore your comments, because that's not at all what we meant. We value your input very much, and that will certainly be part of the recommendation that goes forward. We, as an alternative to, or as, as one way to address your concern, because I hear the concern, and I, and I want to make sure that, you know, you're comfortable with the way your comments move forward to city council. We could do like a, in the red line draft, we could have, you know, staff's recommendation and commission's recommendation, we could have those side by side, we could have them in the same section, so that, you know, when the council goes through and does their final review, they could say, well, you know, we've, on this issue, we support what the commission's recommending with these changes, or we support the staff's recommendation, or some combination of the two. I mean, who knows what it will turn out to be. But I think that might be a way to make sure that the council sees the commission's recommendations alongside staff's recommendations where they differ. So we were kind of doing this as we go, that's, we hadn't thought of doing it that way, but yeah, I understand the concern, I understand the, the criticism that I'm hearing, so that may be a way to address it, so that the council's at least seeing both recommendations, side by side. And, and so that one's not buried in the staff report, as Commissioner Reese stated.
Well, excuse me, I've got a list of speakers, Commissioner Reese and then Commissioner Himmrich. Himmrich.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm sorry, no, he had his hand up to respond to...
Well, I mean, another alternative, too, is to put our recommendation in the zoning code and put your recommendation in the staff report.
Commissioner Himmrich?
I just want to refer you, and I'm looking at it now, to Section 65854 and 65855 of the government code. I believe in, and, you know, this, I think that in light of what the law is, this is outrageous, because I think that we hold the public hearing, and on the proposed zoning ordinance, or amendment to the zoning ordinance, and under 6855 after the hearing, we render our decision in the form of a written recommendation to the legislative body, i.e. the city council. And it includes our reasons, the relationship with the proposed ordinance. It is supposed to be what we think the ordinance should be, not what the planning department decides the ordinance should be. And I just think that this is a, it is typical of the way the process has been working here since, certainly since I've been on the commission. It sounds like a lot longer than that.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm very thankful that there are members of the public that are here to participate in the meeting and to watch the meeting, but it's very, it is distracting, and it's really important for everybody to be able to share their own individual viewpoints. And if you would refrain from that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to, I think there's no question that the commission has the role of providing a formal recommendation to the council, and that will be done. There are different ways that can be presented, but there's no question, and the code is very clear, that you are making a formal recommendation to the council. I would just note, although it's not consequential to this discussion, but I just need to mention it, it's the sections you referred to from the government code don't apply to the city of Santa Monica, because the city of Santa Monica is a charter city. And that's important in other contexts, but not in this context, because in this context we have that, a very similar provision in our local zoning ordinance, which provides that you're making a formal recommendation to the council. So that's all understood. There's been, again, there can be different ways in which that recommendation is presented, but there's no question that you are making a formal recommendation to the city council, and so it must be conveyed, your recommendation must be conveyed to the council. And if your recommendation is different than staff, staff gets free to, can continue to make a, articulate a different approach, but you have the entitlement to set forth what you think your recommendation, or what your recommendation is. I mean, that's what we've been saying throughout this process.
Commissioner Anderson?
I totally understand all the commissioners' frustrations, but I guess I would propose that we try and move back to content, so that in whatever form our recommendation is forwarded to council, we are at least clear on what our recommendation is.
And I would propose that, you know, because I've heard varying opinions, is that, I mean, there are options that have been discussed, and so the commission can proceed, the commission can take a five-minute break. The commission can proceed with recommendations.
I'd like to go back to content, and I'm happy to start that conversation.
And this is on, this conversation is on the record, and will be a part of our record and our, our information and review of this division. And I also support going back to the content.
Commissioner Reese?
Well, I mean, I'm ready to start going into conditions, too.
So I guess, I would start by saying I'm fairly comfortable with almost everything that it said in the draft zoning ordinance. I guess, I mean, it allows, I'm hearing folks uncomfortable with the idea of onsite cultivation. I like the idea of onsite cultivation, because then it's, seems like more of a collective, which is what it's supposed to be, but I'm not sure that there's support for that. And I do feel like that is a different type of business. So I'm generally comfortable with what was proposed in the zoning ordinance, perhaps striking the onsite cultivation, the permitted onsite cultivation altogether. I think that what that is, just the highlights are that it's a CUP, that it's only allowed in the healthcare district, that it's only two dispensaries. I guess, as I mentioned before, I seem to be inclined, and I wish I had a more logical reason, but I, I like the idea of the office setting versus the retail setting. And I, again, I think that that is about, Commissioner McKinnon has a good point about the challenge of only allowing it by appointment, but an office setting at least creates that environment, which is, it's, you know, I don't know, no onsite prescription, that it's, that it's someone going there with a very intentional purpose. Perhaps that's what's behind my thinking, as opposed to some kind of like, oh, I'll swing by.
So I would prefer a retail, but I'm happy to go with the office. I think the most important thing is to get two working, efficient medical marijuana dispensaries going and prove the concept, and that it's a safe, reliable way of delivering this medicine to people who need it in Santa Monica. And, you know, if it, if it works out as it should with all the safeguards, then maybe it can be advanced. But at this stage, I'll go with the office setting. I think we should test this commission to see whether people are prepared to grow, or have a growing room, and work through those other issues.
Can I just, there was one thing that I wanted to go back to, which was Commissioner Himmrich kind of summarized for us, for those of us who weren't here, what the chief's recommendations were. And the inspection seemed confusing to me, but I looked at the West Hollywood ordinance, and it, the West Hollywood ordinance basically says that code enforcement or the sheriffs are allowed to ensure compliance with the standards in the ordinance. And it's really just the video monitoring, I think, that would give me pause from the chief's recommendation.
Commissioner Himmrich, you had your hand up, and then Commissioner Newbold did.
Well, I was actually compelled by the accessibility discussion with respect to retail versus office. I mean, when you go to a medical office in Santa Monica, you pay $20 for parking, you know, it's a big parking garage you go up. I mean, the idea that this is going to be a second-floor office that requires access to one of these medical buildings here in the hospital district seems to me to create a barrier that may be unnecessary. I wouldn't go for the office use necessarily. On the other hand, it might be worth it to have two, one as an office use and one as a retail use. If we're doing this as a pilot program, so to speak, or an experimental program, it might be interesting to see what, how that affected it.
Commissioner Newbold?
Yeah, I guess I feel those advantages to both, because I think, I keep coming back to, it should be like a pharmacy. So to me, that's more of a retail. And yet, I like what Commissioner Anderson said about, it's kind of medical at the same time. So I guess I could kind of go either way. But I'm kind of wondering about the no use on premises, is that, that's not in here? Is that something that, is that in, is it in here? And if it's...
I think it's in the West Hollywood. That's where I saw it.
Right, but is that something that we would...
There is a provision, I guess it's number 10, that says, "No consumption of alcohol or marijuana on the premises in the context of the signage." So that's, I guess, an indirect way of indicating that it's not on the premises. I mean, it could be stated more affirmatively than that. You see that number?
Yeah, I see it now.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering why it says alcohol? Why would, where does that come from? Anyway, it doesn't really matter, but I don't see what...
I would imagine it's...
What about heroin, or any of the other things? I don't really get where alcohol comes into it. So I don't get that. But I guess I'm kind of comfortable with, I think this is going to be changing. I think in two years, in three years, the laws are going to change, and this may even be outdated by then. And, you know, maybe we will be just selling it at pharmacies, so, just like every other, who knows? But I feel like things are going to change, so this is sort of like a pilot program, and I'm kind of comfortable with retail or the office. If there's a, somebody who has a strong opinion, I can go with that. I don't think it matters particularly.
And it comes down to Commissioner Jim.
And I would just like to add that, for what it's worth, even though I support the staff's recommendation, I would more be interested in considering supporting the office setting versus the retail setting.
So what if I said office, would that bridge your vote on our side?
I don't know, we're not giving formal recommendations yet, but, well, I do have a question, though, before Commissioner Reese, you asked a question, would any other commissioners be interested in having staff provide more information about other areas in more depth, so that we can really evaluate everywhere else, other than just the Wilshire corridor and this healthcare district?
I guess right now, I feel like the, coming back to that it's, for help, for medical reasons, the healthcare district makes sense, and given all the other things that we're trying to work on, I just feel like it's, this seems appropriate at this time to me. I don't, I'd rather have staff spend their time on other things.
Well, I'll just say, I mean, we did do a pretty thorough analysis of other areas that, at least the ones we thought of, and we could go into more detail as to why we didn't feel those were appropriate, and how we landed back at the, you know, if it were to be allowed, how we landed back at the healthcare district. It seemed like every place else in town where we looked, there were other circumstan, or other reasons why it wouldn't make sense there, so.
Like, just briefly, like what?
Okay, so in the Bergamot area, we saw that as a place where we were, you know, trying to encourage residential uses, and, you know, it's subject to the new specific plan, and with the types of uses we're trying to encourage there, it didn't seem like an appropriate place. When we looked at the industrial conservation district, because of some of the schools and service facilities and other things that are located in that district, it seemed like by the time you did the radiuses, there wouldn't really be any areas left.
So, so in a nutshell, like Bergamot wasn't a great plan, primarily because of the residential consideration, and IC wasn't very favorable because of the schools consideration, but the Wilshire corridor is right near residences and schools, and so...
Well, we never recommended the Wilshire corridor, so we recommended the healthcare district. The other place we looked at was the office campus, which would have included, like, the Santa Monica Business Park out, and Ocean Park here in the airport. And that we ended up rejecting, because that entire property is controlled by one owner, for the most part, and we thought it would be kind of weird to put that allowance on a single property owner or a single development area. So we rejected that. So then we ended up back, which was our original recommendation, kind of back at the healthcare area, thinking that as a, primarily as a medical use, it made the most sense in the hospital district.
Well, my only comment on that is, then, would be, in the healthcare district, where there are offices, it just seems more like a natural fit to have it in an office setting, with hopefully some ability to address accessibility and things like that. But I, you know, in terms of the retail aspect, so in the healthcare district, considering we're talking about a medical issue, it makes sense, which is more of an office setting type of an environment, rather than retail. But so that when I think of retail, I think, well, retail happens everywhere. So if it's more of a retail storefront type of a thing than the healthcare district, it doesn't seem to make a, it doesn't seem to have a good point to focus on that area. Commissioner Reese?
I think that there should be the flexibility to go into a retailer office area. I mean, if we're talking about, I don't go and get my prescriptions from my doctor's office. I go to a retail center and buy my, and get my prescription. So I think there should be the flexibility of doing that. I think that we should look at, in terms of other, we have 500, we haven't come to a square footage of, or a lineal footage, how far away from a school, but I think we also should add into that, shouldn't be next to, you know, if we have social service areas where we're trying to get people, we're spending money trying to get people off drugs and alcohol, we shouldn't be looking at doing these within X square feet of those areas as well. And I think that, you know, as in the staff, in the, in the proposed zoning code, we should have a security plan that looks at these things, that, the security plan that's reviewed by the police department, and it could include things such as limiting access, video, 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 and, you know, the other things that are on here, emergency contact and alarm system, all those things should be considered as part of the security plan that's ultimately approved by the police department. I think that it makes a lot of, so, those are, response to a couple of things I've heard tonight. I also think that it makes a lot of sense to, that we have a bifurcation of prescriptions and sales. And, and in terms of where it goes, I guess I'm a little more, a little more liberal on the fact that it's a retail use, and it should, it could potentially go anywhere. But to, I also agree with what somebody said, was we should get a couple of these off the ground, I think it was Commissioner McKinnon, we should get a couple of these off the ground, and if it's, if it's more palatable at this moment to pick a smaller area, then let's, let's try to do that. But let's not pick an area that's so, so restrictive, that once you apply this radius, that all of a sudden there's no opportunity to do it. And we're only talking about two of these things, and we've, I haven't heard anybody who's talked about, thrown out a square footage number of more than 4,500 square feet, so these aren't going to be huge.
Well, 45 would be the upper limit. I think it's more likely 35.
Well, I said, I said, I haven't heard anybody who's talked about anything, any square footage is higher than 45.
And just to chip into that, my, my preference is to start at retail, but I'm, if there's a, and have a retail establishment, but if there was no support for that, at least let's do an office. So my desire is to move forward on having two dispensaries here, and try and get the support for retail, if not, let's move to an office. Let's do something.
Okay, so where are we with retail, in terms of numbers on this commission?
Well, I think I'm there. I think Commissioner Himmrich is...
There's three, four?
So we're there on that.
Okay.
Can I just say, I don't know, I'm trying to, trying to look on the computer. I guess one thought that comes to mind is, are there, is there really sufficient retail space opportunities within the healthcare district?
I think that's what, didn't one of the speakers say that they applied these parameters, and they couldn't find a space?
Mr. Lay.
Which is why he shifted it, yeah, it's all of these maps. As I said, there's a something, there's a shop, there's a storefront on my street...
That's perfect for it?
That is ready for it. They already have green leaves on the windows. I'm telling you, it's on 14th, it's south, it's on 14th Street, on the west side of the street, south of Wilshire. It's called like the Wellness Center or something. And it already, it looks like one, it's just putting the product in there, right? I mean, it really is...
Just outside of the healthcare district.
And, yeah, and when I looked at it, the first time I drove by it, I said, oh, that's going to be the local dispensary. So I think that it may be that we might need to shift the district a little to get what we're looking for, but I don't know.
Or, or look at, you know, whatever our most intense commercial, I mean, I don't know that we have any commercial zoning that doesn't allow residential in it, but whatever the most, do we have a general commercial zone that, that has a little more, you know, spread out a little bit more over the, over the city, where there's a few more options to look at?
You mean like, right next to the healthcare district, along Santa Monica Boulevard?
Does, can staff answer that, or?
In the general commercial? The car dealers.
So, Santa Monica Boulevard would be mixed-use boulevard, I believe.
But it looks like...
Well, there's some that's general commercial, but that's also, you know, the auto dealer...
It seems like a perfect match. Yeah, yeah, what's the point of the stars? I mean, I guess that was one thing I didn't totally...
Well, he's saying, he's saying there's some kind of medical facility there.
So what?
So he's saying that, look, these are medical-related facilities, why wouldn't, you've already allowed other, the way I read this was, you've already allowed other medical facilities in these areas, why are you limiting us to the healthcare center?
I think there was also a suggestion, there'd be lots of people who might need assistance clustered in those areas, so you go to where the people are that need this. I know that.
Yeah.
So wait, can we just, I mean, the general commercial on Santa Monica Boulevard, next to the healthcare district, yes, there are auto dealers there, but there's other stuff there, too. I mean, why can't you have some kind of a retail pharmacy?
I like...
Pico?
The one, yeah, I like that one. The commissioner, the one commissioner who's voting against this as a... The commissioner, the one commissioner who's voting against this as, as what I think is a good idea, which is the industrial conservation area. Centered in the city, there's a fairly big swath of it, and...
And we all have to drive through it on our way home from work.
But we're trying to think of like...
It's transit-adjacent, it's a long SPO line.
Transit-oriented dispensary.
But I thought part of the idea was to have it in the neighborhoods so people who were well enough to walk to it could walk to it, I don't know.
And I would just point out that when we, we looked at the industrial conservation, and, I mean, we could look at that again, but the problem we saw was that, when you consider parks and schools and some service facilities, and other things that you'd have to keep a distance from, there just wasn't much space left, so it made it hard to figure out where it could actually locate.
But your, but the recommendation is for a small space anyway.
Well, could staff, tell me again why my idea of Santa Monica Boulevard, right next to the healthcare district, where all the other healthcare services are, is, even though there are car dealerships, there are also other things there?
And the car dealerships that want to remodel, want to put a cafe in there?
You didn't like the idea, but I don't understand why.
I didn't say I didn't like the idea, I was just pointing out that the loose focus is that area and the auto dealer, and, so, that was one of the priority uses for that area, I didn't offer an opinion.
One, one kind of dealer versus another.
And so you could, yeah, you could do the, one near the auto dealers, and then one on Nebraska, near, near all the artists in that arts conservation district.
No, let's, let's, okay, let, this is...
Let's get this done.
Yeah, I, I would move that we do this along Santa Monica or Wilshire Boulevard, and we allow up to two in a retailer office space.
Done.
And up to, what, what's the square footage?
2,500. That was what they originally suggested.
Staff?
Uh huh.
Can I, can I, can I just ask staff, what schools were they talking about were, were, created a conflict in the IC?
Crossroads and New Roads, up and down Olympic, there's also the Salvation Army, and then there's Memorial Park, so, when you start looking at the distance requirements, there became only a few streets where it really seemed like there might be options.
Wait, the Salvation Army's at 13th Street, right, isn't it?
Eleven, eleven.
11th Street, that's, that's miles away, isn't it?
No, it's...
No, because then there's Memorial Park at 14th.
The issue with that is that it's actually a long way from anything.
Yeah.
And it'll be very obvious if someone pulls up outside what they're doing, and one of the features about this is to regularize it, and make it as acceptable as possible for people who have the problem that needs to be treated.
Well, the only thing I was confused about was, I'm not exactly sure where crossroads is on the map, but I see Lincoln, and I see McKinley, and I see...
But look, that's, that's not for us, that's for the planning department to run their compasses over and work out how far they are away.
Public versus private.
Or, it's, or, it's for the, it's for the shop owner who wants to find a place to do it, and we just need to give him a couple of swaths of land where this is, this is possible, and, and then let the market...
And I support Commissioner Reese, the idea of Santa Monica, as we all know, and Wilshire, because that is kind of, it can blend in as part of the fabric, I mean, if it's done well.
Do you want to give us parameters from what street, Lincoln to 20th, or, or what are you thinking?
From Ocean to Centinela.
So you're, so you're considering expanding the recommendation from just the healthcare-adjacent to a broader...
Healthcare-adjacent.
Well, because it sounds like the staff recommendation, or at least the, in the original discussion, was in the healthcare area, which to me sounded like everything in the healthcare area, or the blocks surrounding the healthcare area, and not necessarily anything within a much, several blocks in either direction, but I just want to make sure that I'm hearing what the commission is proposing, is that never mind the healthcare area, but just several blocks in either direction, or some other, some other destination that you're proposing.
How about Santa Monica from 14th to 23rd, which basically is from the west end of the healthcare district to the east end of the healthcare district? Or Santa Monica or Wilshire, from 14th to 23rd?
I just wonder if that's still such a small area, that...
You couldn't find two...
I don't, I don't know.
So you plotted it out?
You seen Lincoln Boulevard in Venice recently?
Right, but none of those, those, I mean, a fair number of those are not following any rules that were, were established.
Right.
Okay, what about, what about...
What about Lincoln to Centinela?
Yeah.
We could, well, we could certainly define that.
And Wilshire and Santa Monica.
But if you, if, the problem with the corner of Lincoln and Wilshire is it got Memorial Park.
Right, so it won't happen there.
Wait, not Memorial?
Not Memorial Park, Christine Reed.
Christine Reed Park, so are we defining a district into which it can fall, or defining the four boulevards? What exactly are we doing? We're saying it's somewhere on Wilshire, between Lincoln and Centinela that fits all the other parameters, is available, and the same thing on Santa Monica, so it won't be at the corner of Lincoln and Wilshire.
Correct.
But it may be somewhere else that's 600 feet away, 1,000 feet.
And you, I don't think you discussed the radius.
No, that's set by state and federal law, I think, isn't it?
No, what we heard earlier was that...
They're different, I would say a thousand feet, which is federal law, not the 600.
You have the right to, right.
I just picked, so, federal law is a thousand feet.
But, but the thousand makes it a very restrictive, I mean, it's very hard to find it under those circumstances, just as a practical thing.
It's like two blocks, right?
I don't, how could there even be federal law?
Yeah, and so, given that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's what their folder is now saying it ought to be, when he talks about whatever he's talking about.
Well, okay, so let's...
So if it's a thou, if it is a thousand, then you want to have a bigger...
Two football fields works for me.
So a block is 320 feet.
So that's two blocks. So you could have one, I'm looking at Lincoln Middle School, at 14th and California, you could have one at 14th and Santa Monica. Right?
At 1,000 feet?
No, she's saying...
600.
600.
Yeah.
Easily, that's much more than 600.
Yeah, that's much further, but you couldn't have it at Wilshire.
I think you almost could.
Clearly I'm in the minority, but I think anything less than 1,000 feet is inappropriate.
But you think, you think, we think the use is inappropriate too?
Like, let's make this impossible.
Okay, so, so...
Let's remember though, I mean, it's not for recreational use, it's medical, it's medicine.
And, does anybody, is, is everybody comfortable with 600, does anybody want to go split the, with the baby?
I'm comfortable with 600.
I'm fine with that.
All right, and are we comfortable with Lincoln to Centinela?
Yep.
She's joking.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Wait, can I just be, clarify, maybe Lincoln to Centinela, but not in the downtown district, just so it's, so we're consistent in terms of the zoning districts?
Just east of Lincoln?
Yeah, I don't know what that's called, Lincoln Court or something, just so it's aligning with some districts, not that I oppose to it being downtown.
Well, Lincoln has enough.
Because ultimately, there will be one downtown.
Lincoln has enough medical...
No, I was gonna say, traffic.
Well, it's going to be a large group of people who live in the downtown area, if this works, it will be just an accepted part of pharmaceutical treatment for people. Why wouldn't it be in the downtown?
Because they're going to get on their bikes, Richard, and they're gonna...
People with multiple sclerosis don't ride bikes, I mean, that's, I'm not being flippant about it, but it just is, it's the nature of the problem that people have that have this, that it's a different thing, anyway, so...
Yeah, we got, I mean, we got a consensus there, you're trying to mess with it, dude. Please.
Lucky Commissioner Sumaya like this.
And the bifurcation, again, I'm sorry, is in here, or it's not in here?
It's not in there, so we should write that in.
Yeah, it's not in there yet.
I think Paul's got it.
Can I clarify just real quick, it's the healthcare district and Wilshire and Santa Monica, between Lincoln Court and Centinela?
Fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I hadn't contemplated that, but...
We talk about outdoor display now.
No, no, we're not done with, are we done with all of these, what about growing, no growing?
I say no growing, just because, I don't, just because it's, if it's like a pharmacy, they're not growing the stuff, they're not growing other things.
Making medicine?
And plus, one person said that 100 square feet, 100 square feet wasn't enough to grow anyway, so...
But we're looking at 2,500 square feet, I think is what the commission said?
So, this is a live product, and a live product is a little different to something that's made in Woodland Hills, the other major pharmaceutical place in the Southland, and so, there may be a place for people to have a range of these plants, which they then grow, there's a whole other level of complexity involved in ensuring that there's no smells, or, you know, outside knowledge of it, you've got to have heat, you've got to have water and so on, but if someone wants to go to that length, then the issue is that we're prepared to accept it. I mean, it's really, really difficult, there's a huge amount of water and a huge amount of heat that's going to be needed.
I say no.
Not sustainable.
I'm not comfortable with that, it's not sustainable.
There's not much that's sustainable about marijuana being grown in an office, right? That's, that's the bottom line, but it, it may be that it treats people so that you've actually got a fresh supply.
Yeah, all right, I, I could be persuaded either, either way.
Look, that's, that's the one thing that I think I'd like to ask the guys in the planning department, if we're pushing the envelope, when you studied this, what did you find?
There's no mystery to it at all, I mean, you can, you can certainly get your cannabis from, within your collective, from other parts of California, but we thought perhaps that a small area would be appropriate to have onsite to grow certain strains of, of the cannabis that might be appropriate for the...
And when you studied West Hollywood, which seems to be the best regulated and most sensibly organized, what did you find?
I actually can't remember, it depends with, Amy, do you have it?
I have to know without, but...
Okay.
I'm prepared to have a growing room of no more than, I don't know, what, 150 feet, or 10% or 15% of the overall total of square footage.
Okay, I, I can support that.
I can support it too, it doesn't matter so much.
What is it, 10%?
He said 10 or 15, I heard in my head 15.
In the chart they gave us, they said it requires 350 square feet, 300 feet for a grow room.
Out of what?
Three, 30, they're saying it's 3804, so that means this would have to be, everything would be smaller, this is 4,000 square feet, so if we're talking 2,500, everything is going to be smaller.
That was one guy's assessment of it, and it's probably about 8% of the total.
I just don't see why, I don't, I'm not, I haven't been convinced why you need to have this small growing room.
Because you need product to sell, and if you're going to have to drive that in, is that, we're creating more, more trips, we're offsetting our, you know, it's a water use issue, there's, it was an article the other day, I swear to God, on the drought, and this, this commissioner from Mendocino County, who had to put in automatic, they had to put in really restrictive drought things, and they said the biggest issue in our community is the growers, they're using all this water and nobody's talking about that, so it's a big water issue, so again, why are we externalizing our issues?
Oh, well, maybe, maybe, I don't know enough about how marijuana sales work, but maybe, we, we already are wondering, is it even this law that we have to get it, it has to be California grown, we don't know if that's true.
State law.
We don't know that that's true.
Okay, and look and check, okay.
And, you know, maybe you...
Yeah, we'll double, we'll double check on that, I mean, it's clear as Paul's indicating that it has to be grown by the collective, and so that would probably make sense that it's done in California, but we can verify.
So we have a proposal of 15, 15% of the square footage, and I know that we have...
Can be used.
Can be used.
I think we've got four on that.
Well, I'm not gonna...
Three for sure.
If everybody's comfortable with it, I'm not going to not support this concept because of this one thing, because I don't know, I feel like I know enough to, it just makes me uncomfortable, but I, I'll go with it if everybody else is comfortable.
Okay, is there anything else on here that we didn't, in the, in the police chief's list, or on here that we have not discussed? Mr. Foley, have we given?
If there's anything burning, you can bring it back, I guess, and remind us of it.
Dun, dun.
Before we get to the red line.
But I see that the West Hollywood statute does have a lot of things that we don't have in ours, and we might want to stick them in.
Such as, this would be a good time to bring them up.
Okay, they can't store more than $200 in cash reserves overnight.
That seems, that seems...
It works in West Hollywood, we're talking about creating a safe environment.
Listen, you...
Hey, you know, the point was, was that, there was a discussion earlier this evening about what works in a, in a well-run, what creates a well-run environment?
$200.
So back to the cultivation question, West Hollywood does permit onsite cultivation, not more than 1,500 square feet?
Does they go up to 4,500 square feet? So that would be 30%.
So we're halving that, I'm okay with halving it, 200 seems an absurdly low amount, you wouldn't want to have 10,000, but, if there's a stream of people that come between 6:00 and 8:00, and we're proposing to close it at 8:00, I, I think with the hour, that was your hours, 10 until 8:00, proposed?
I have no idea if that's true, I can just tell you.
You can grow a lot of pot in a 10 by 20 room.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd do it hydroponically.
But they have a, they probably put it in a...
Seven o'clock? On Sunday, yeah, you, you could still have quite a few people who come in, purchase the product, and, $200 is a very low amount, I assume it's the crime risk, but...
I, I think that should be put into as part of the safety plan, that they have to look at, is, is, is the storage informa, you know, how do they store their money, what do they do with their money, and that should be part of a plan that's presented to, as, as part of this conditional use and reviewed by the CP.
And that brings us neatly to Mr. Feinstein's request of a task force, are we in support of that or not?
Does anybody have enough free time to volunteer?
I personally wouldn't be on it, but, you know, there may be, Jason can be on it.
Yeah. That's the risk of not being here.
Look, in the long run, in the long run, that's fine, but my sense is, is the task force would spend a year and a half coming up with recommendations, and then these, it will be legalized in California, and that will have gone to waste.
I admit, I'd prefer to move ahead.
Yeah, let's...
I think we should just do it.
Yes.
Keep going.
Anything else?
Okay, well, I, I mean, I could tell you everything, but you aren't allowed to have tobacco, alcohol, blah, blah, you can't consume it on the premises, you have to wait till you get home, it actually says that in the thing.
Well, that goes to the police chief's precaution about having people use it as soon as they exit the premises, but in the public on the street, so...
And so this ordinance does address that, they can't enter under the age, people under the age of 18, can only come if accompanied by a parent or a legal guardian, the only amount that can be provided is consistent with personal medical use, you know, I mean, there are just a lot of, oh, this is, collective shall provide law enforcement and all neighbors within 100 feet of the collective with the name and phone number of an onsite community relations staff person to notify.
I actually think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, and I thought, I saw that, I think it's in, I think it's in here.
Collective operators must attend regular meetings with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and City Public Safety Division.
Actually, I'm going to clarify that, it, there is an emergency contact in here, but it doesn't talk about sharing it with the neighbors.
That would be good, though.
And then they have some collective things.
Can we go back to one, something that you just said about no use on, not only not on the premises, but you have to wait till you get home?
Yes.
What do you guys think about that? Because I actually think that takes away, I like that myself.
Doesn't matter, you should at least say it.
It should be the rule, there's lots of rules we have that are hard to enforce, but if somebody's smoking not on the premises, but at the corner, then you can, you have something to fall back on, because it's, again, supposed to be...
Well, if you go to a liquor store and you buy that, you know, do you use it at home? If you go to a CVS and buy Advil, you take, you could take, get out to the car and take your Advil, so I have no idea.
Well, so I'm saying that I think that we should have that, because I think it's an added precaution.
Licenses only last a year and they expire after a year, they aren't renewable, I guess? And that can't be assigned.
A business license?
A recommend...
Says all licenses, they must issue a license for the dispensary, so it says it all, well, that's how you collect taxes, right?
That's a business license.
Yeah.
Well, they're renewable each year.
This says they expire, it's not, and, it may be renewed pursuant to section 5.08... I don't know.
Aren't you guys saying the same thing, though? You're saying it expires in a year, and you say that we can expire in a year, so, or you can renew it in a year, so it must have to expire to get a renewal.
I think they, I think they're doing the thing, the problem we have with the conditional use permits, where they don't have the right to renew it, in the sense that it's a vested right, you know, that issue we always have with that, that once you grant it, you can't take it away, this is a different kind of license, I think.
Yeah, right.
And then you can't assign the license, I think that's important, too. Anyway, I, I mean, you know, and then other than that, they have some definitions, it has to be a collective and comply with the law, the exterior, the exterior appearance is compatible with the commercial structures, there was a chart I just saw of every city, and every single one of them requires it to be in a commercial district, every single one. The exterior appearance is compatible with commercial structures already constructed or under construction within the immediate neighborhood, no more than four, except that there was one that was already there, so they actually have five. And that's, that's it, that's the end of it, it may have been revised, this is dated 2009, but I thought that there was an emergency, there was an emergency change that didn't change anything, I think, that I just talked about. So that's West Hollywood.
Okay, I think, I think that's a pretty good list of conditions, and it's got to come to a conditional use permit, and we can look at any sites.
It's actually not a conditional use permit.
Those are here, oh, it is in ours, okay.
Well, we know what that means.
Yeah.
All right, well, it sounds like you did have, I mean, I wrote them all down, so we can all get together at some point and double-check our notes, but if there are no other conditions or any other, you know, restrictions anybody wants to talk about, I think that the staff has the list, I do. Okay, I'm hearing a got it, all right.